We'll bring this meeting of the Ventura County Supervisors of April 22, 2008, to order. Roberta, will you do the roll call?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
Supervisor Foy. Here. We have a moment of affirmation by Pastor Bob Sobel.
Good morning. I'm Pastor Sobel from Calvary Chapel, Thousand Oaks. And I just wanted to bring a scripture to you from Philippians, Chapter 2. This is out of the Amplified Bible, so it's a little, it's got a few more words in it. It says, "Do nothing from factional motives through contentiousness, strife, selfishness, or for unworthy ends, or prompted by conceit and empty arrogance. Instead, in the true spirit of humility, let each regard others as better than and superior to himself, thinking more highly of one another than you do of yourself. Let each of you esteem and look upon, and be concerned, not merely for his own interests, but also each for the interests of others." And I just wanted to share a little personal testimony of kind of my experience with this scripture. For many years, I've been both a pastor and a musician. And many times, I would preach on this, on this passage, you know, we need to do for others, be concerned for others, not just be concerned for ourselves. And, but I had such a love for playing guitar and, and being in the music business that very often I would, I would do a service, I had a church on Sunday nights, and, and the people, you know, would want to talk to me afterwards, and now I've, I've got to be off to do a gig. And I was just, as much as I wanted to do for others, I was just, I just loved playing music so much that, that I, I just really wasn't, wasn't following through. Then at the end of 2006, I got into a car accident, and a pretty serious car accident that kind of affected the mobility of my right arm. And, you know, I still play a little bit, but since then, I've, I've kind of lost the ability to play professionally. So I had to think, what, what am I going to do for a, for a career? And I started putting my resume out and, you know, tried everything possible and really prayed about what I should be doing. And the one thing that came through for me was to become a ministry supervisor at the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission. And, and it was kind of the last thing that I wanted to do. And so they put me in that position, and, you know, that was the one place that hired me. And so suddenly, I was working with homeless people and, and just in a kind of position of leadership there, and just wondering what to do. And, and I just found that it became kind of a passion for me and one of the most rewarding things that, that I, that I could have done, but never, just never would have, would have done had that accident not occurred. And that's the position that I'm, I'm in now, as well as being a pastor at Calvary Chapel. And I just want to encourage each person here, as I'm sure you don't need that much encouragement because you're, you're in a position of serving others. But if, if you don't live a life of service and esteeming others higher than yourselves, God will do what, what he needs to do to put you in a position of doing that, because that's, that's the heart of God, to reach out to others. Once we are right with God and get to know our Lord and Savior, then he doesn't ask us just to kind of sit there and just focus on ourselves, he asks us to reach out to others. And he put me in a position where, where it was, it was almost kind of, it wasn't against my will, but it was against my habit. And so I would just, just like to, just remind each of us that, that when we're serving others, we're serving God. And so let me just end with a word of prayer. Lord, we come before you and thank you that you've given each one of us here the opportunity to, to serve others. I just pray for the supervisors here, that you would just continue to strengthen and equip them to, to do that, to esteem others higher than themselves, as, as your word says, and to never lose focus of the high calling that you've brought this organization. And just pray for effectiveness, pray for, for wisdom, and, and that each one would be guided by the Spirit of love and, and mercy, and, and that you would just do a new work in each of our lives today and move in this meeting. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance. I'll, I'll lead that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion and a second? Who are you waiting on? Okay. We will move on to our agenda review.
Yes, Chairman Foy. Item 27, you've received a revised board letter, page 2. Item 39, you've received a letter from Teresa Jordan. Item 45, you've also received a letter from Teresa Jordan. And there's an addendum, item, item number 53, which is the recommendation of Supervisor Parks to appoint Connie Riesley to the Developmental Disability Board, Area 9. I believe you received all of those in your packet, and they've been posted.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we have, pull item 10 from the consent calendar and discuss it after we approve the consent calendar.
And I would also like to pull item 15 for a question.
Okay, so we have item 10 and 15 from our consent. Any other questions or any differences? No? Okay, so first of all, I guess we need to move the agenda. Okay.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on the agenda? Then let's go to our consent items 11 through 14, and then 16 through 21. Do we have a motion for that? What are, wait, it's coming? It's coming. There it is. Who said technology's faster? All right. Do we want to go over item number 10?
Thank you. This is, this is the county audit that we have on our consent calendar, and we have some, some back and forth about whether this has been a consent calendar item or a regular calendar item. I would just like to, as we, as we approve this audit, also include in their motion that this become always a regular consent item, not, I mean, a regular calendar item and not a consent item. We spent $100,000 on this, that's what we, the board appropriated, at least for, for the audit. It is something that a significant amount of time is put into, and I believe we ought to have a actual report on the audit, what the audits, if, if, if nothing else, it'll give us a chance to highlight all the things that we're doing well. But, you know, we've had the grand jury make a big, strong recommendation about audits. This is the one outside independent prep, you know, audit that we have that's sort of the big one. And I just think that it shouldn't be something that's on the consent calendar that doesn't have discussion, doesn't have a presentation to the public, and doesn't elevate it to, to the level of importance that I think it should have. It's also something that, it is the one responsibility that we have as a board. Clearly, we need to have almost an independent relationship with the auditors so that we can ask their questions and all of that. And I think it would also help to establish that if we have, have this presentation from them at this point in time. So with that, there's not anything about this audit that, you know, makes me say, hey, there's a big problem. And regardless of what was in this audit, I wouldn't, I would be making the same motion. So my motion is to receive and file the single, single audit report of June 30th, direct the clerk of the board to publish attached notice for public inspection, receive and file a report to the management for the audit of the comprehensive annual financial report, and receive and file the independent accountant's report on the agreed-upon procedures applied to appropriations, limit calculations for the year ended June 30th. And then the fifth recommendation would be, direct the CEO for that this to be a regular agenda item in the future. Do you?
Supervisor Bennett, I don't know if that's what you were going to ask, do you want to just continue this to our next meeting with it on the regular agenda? I don't know if it's a, you know, time.
Is there any time certain issues that we have?
Issues. This is actually not the big audit report, you already received that a few weeks ago when I presented the CAFER and the external auditors were here. The single audit is the federal money that the county receives with federal reporting required under the single audit report.
Are there any time constraints for us adopting it today or receiving it today?
I believe there's a, a, a time constraint, but I'll have to check on that and get back to you.
Okay, you want to continue this for later today?
I can always, you know, if you'll receive and file it, and then we can also bring it back with additional discussion items if you choose.
Sure, I mean, you know, that, that is fine too, if there's any possibility, I mean, I don't, we don't need to cause a problem from, if there is a problem with that, we could, but, well, why don't we just get, can we get a response here today and, in terms of the presentation with regard to that? Okay, great, so if we could just hold this and get that response.
Right. Is it a possible, possibility to come back and make a presentation on this, or something that you would not need to?
Well, there's no changes to the report. We can always ask the external auditors to come back if you have any particular questions or want a discussion on this.
Right, because this is one of two major audits that we do, the one you brought to us already, right?
This is the single audit for the federal money and the management report, which is the external auditor's recommendations to management of the county.
Right, right. Which, okay, so there is a good opportunity for us to have some discussion on that, though, to understand it and.
Same as when the CAFER was presented.
Exactly, maybe do it the same way.
If that's what you desire.
Yeah, okay, yes.
And I don't know if it's necessary to have the auditors here, but I think, you know, staff is fully aware of what's in this report, if they can help us to understand it a little bit better in terms of what we may have put in place to reduce this from future.
Okay, good.
Okay, so do you want a motion to receive it and do it now, and then we'll come back with it later, or do something different, pull it off later?
Well, while we, while we trail it, if we get the answer that we can do this, just fine at our next meeting, which by the way, it's not next week, but it's in two weeks, then we could do it in two weeks as a regular agenda item and have a short presentation. Somebody be prepared to give us a short presentation on it also.
Does that work for broader?
But if we find out before the end of the meeting that we have to do this because there's something that has to be filed before then, then I'm happy to do the receive and file, and we can still get a report later.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we understand that motion?
We'll trail it.
We'll trail it. Or, no, we're not moving it, we're just going to trail it then, okay. Good, number 15, and then, yes, 15.
I have a question on item 15, if someone from the Human Services Agency, Mr. Zimmerman. I see that what we're doing is, as I understand it, expending some monies based on what we're anticipating receiving next year from Cow Works, is that right? The question I have is, are we pretty sure that that, those funds will come, I think it's about $400,000?
Yes, we're, we're almost positive those funds will come. We get an allotment around $10 to $11 million a year for childcare. We contract out roughly a conservative rate and then usually adjust that contract, and that's what part this recommendation's doing, is adjusting this year's contract. And we are on a cash basis, so it will roll to next year, and we should receive about a $10 million allocation once again, and we will reestablish the contract, but anticipating that these costs will, will go into next year.
Okay, if you're pretty much 99% guaranteed they will come, that was my only concern.
That is correct.
And then I have a slightly unrelated question, actually very unrelated, but I thought, while you're up here and the county council isn't watching. The, we found in, you know, the papers were indicating that in a few of the counties, not Ventura County, they had found in some of the foster homes, some, I guess, sexual predators that had been previously incarcerated. And my question is, do we run those kind of files here, where you look and see the homes where our foster children are to see that they don't also have these kind of predators?
Yes, we, we, we are the licensing agency for the foster home system here, and we do have a process by which we do checks for, for criminal activity as well as, you know, sexual predators and those type of things, yes. So there are, are processes in place that we go through to validate that in the licensing process. The state has a more extensive database and does this cross-check as time goes on, and that's what these findings were.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good to know. I'll go ahead and move then, item number 15.
We have a motion and a second? In that passage unanimously, we will move on now to our regular agenda. Let's go to, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, I want to get going.
Trail Jean's not here, we can just.
That's right, that's right. All right. We will move on to public comments. And we have two cards I see, Graham Galliford.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Graham Galliford. I live at 2517 Ocean Drive on Silver Strand Beach. Many people may be familiar with me. I've got some things here, I want to just put this on the, on the board. You do have copies of these in front of you, this is obviously far too large for the screen, anyway. Here to, we were unable to be present, my wife, Bella, is in the audience here, were unable to be present last week for the meeting agenda item concerning the Silver Strand Beach tower. And wanted to make some comment about that this week. The county is not in compliance with the LCP in this matter. Indeed, the county may also be in violation of the LCP in terms of the two bathrooms that are being built, one on Hollywood Beach, one on Silver Strand Beach. And the premise you can see there, or the ruling you can see there, is that none of these structures are within the 10% limit, which enables these to be rebuilt rather than new construction. Without compliance to that 10% rule, it's required of the county to actually go through the permitting process, not only through the county itself, but also through the Coastal Commission. And that's something that you need to understand, you have been led to believe by the Harbor Department, these are just replacements, they are not. They are new constructions under your own guidelines under the LCP. Just want to also mention, of course, as supervisor, as director, Lynn Krieger mentioned, and the lifeguard who was here last week mentioned, I saw the video, the tower does not save lives. There are other measures that can be handled, other measures that can be taken that will provide the sort of requirements that have been suggested the tower might fulfill without actually building a tower. Towers do not save lives, people save lives. In fact, the tower is ineffective. My second. My second slide here gives you some details of why that is the case. During the season when lifeguards are present, which is actually only 74 days of the year, if you look at the NOAA records, it looks as though the tower would only be able to provide any view for about a quarter of the time, a total of 25 days per year. That's all. Yes, of course, those 25 days may be very important, but it is nevertheless a very small percentage of the total. The U.S. Lifeguard Association actually doesn't talk about towers, but it talks about direct supervision and direct lifeguard activity using mobile units. And one of the reasons, of course, is that because towers do not provide visibility. Now, there was also a mention that beach usage is increasing exponentially. That's actually not true. If you look at the U.S. Lifeguard Association data and look at beach attendance at Ventura Beaches, you can see the linear regression shows a decline over the period between 2000 and up to the present day. And we can see that continue. You were shown some very crowded beach pictures at the beginning of Director Krieger's talk last week, which was actually only for one day of the year. If you go to the beach for about at least 90% of the year, you'll see virtually nobody on the beach. Beach visitation is, is actually declining. And that's U.S. Lifeguard Association data. This tower is going to be placed in the wrong spot. If you look at the beach, and this is looking northwards along the beach, you can see I've shown there the high water mark and the building line. The planned proposed building area has been regularly inundated throughout the year, particularly in the winter season. In fact, my house is on Ocean Drive, and the water was up to the back end of my house, inundating that area completely over, in the last season.
You've only got 19 seconds, so.
Sure. The other impacts have not been considered in this. The environmental impact, the parking lot control, which the Harbor Department is actually inefficient at, at performing the task. Last night, the parking lot, which is supposed to be closed at sunset, was actually open at midnight. Well, thank you very much for your attention, and I hope we'll get a chance to review this at some later date.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Wes Whitman.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board, CEO. My name is Wes Whitman, I represent Gray Star Real Estate Partners, the owners of the Casa Serena Hotel and Watcher Trap Restaurant, Hampton Inn, and the apartments down at Channel Islands Harbor. I'm here to give you a brief update on the Casa Serena redevelopment, but before that, would like to, to also express our excitement for the success of the Hampton Inn to date. What you all helped us do over the last year is take a dilapidated wing of the Casa Serena Hotel that was nearly vacant and turn it into a very vibrant new hotel that is averaging about 80 to 85% occupancy. So more, more, more people than we expected are coming down to the harbor each week, and we've had a tremendous feedback. As you may remember, we ended up spending almost twice as much as what was required in our lease to be able to create that, that nice of a, of a product, and we're really thrilled with, with the outcome and, and the public feedback that we've received, and appreciate your, your support in, in these efforts. We're now turning our full attention to the redevelopment of the Casa Serena site. As you all know, if you've been down there recently, it's, it is still dilapidated and nearly vacant, and we, we see this as a huge impetus to the revitalization of, of Channel Islands Harbor, to be able to replace this existing hotel, and to really activate the public space and, and provide access right now, as you, as you've seen, very little access and very few people actually going down to, to enjoy the harbor. So we're really excited about that. And, you know, over the last year, we have, we have been working with different sets of architects, and it's just not felt that, that some of the, some of those groups had gotten it right. We, we really want to do this, want to do this right, and we've found a group that we've retained, Cooper Carey, which is a world-renowned land planning and architectural firm. We've, we've combined their expertise with, with our operating partners and all of our internal hotel and, and development experts as well, and come up with plans that we think are, are going to be very, very exciting for the revitalization of, of the harbor. We're, we're very close to being prepared to getting out to the public with those plans, and plan to certainly report back our, our, our response from the public, and, and are excited to share that with you. And in fact, depending on the timeline, I may come to you in the interim to give you an update on, on how those public meetings are going. We're really excited to move through the process as quickly as possible, as you, as you can imagine, and as I've heard for the past year, the public has told us, we cannot wait to see this happen. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting, we can't wait to see this happen, we feel the same way. As many of you are aware, the Coastal Commission about 18 months ago had a workshop on the, on, on the requirement of many hotel projects to include a for-sale component, to finance not only the hotels and to create great hotels, but to also finance the public amenities that come with, come with those hotels. Our project will have those same requirements from our investors, but it will be a very small portion of the overall hotel and, and housing count at the, at the harbor. And so we think it's going to be very, very acceptable and will be critical for, for our project to be able to provide the, both the hotel and the public amenities that we're hoping to provide. So I just wanted to give you this update, and again, look forward to working with you in the coming months to get this done as quickly as possible and to hopefully provide a, a great new hotel, and new restaurants, and, and new public amenities at the, at the end of Peninsula Road at the Channel Islands Harbor. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate all you're doing to improve the harbor, thank you. Those are all the cards I have, nobody else, Roberta? That's it? Okay, then we will go on to our board comments. If I missed those someplace on my agenda? Supervisor Flynn, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I submit the list of dames to adjourn in memory of, to the clerk of the board, and ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the, on the list. Just make a comment on Earth Day. When I first came on the board, the environmental, which was in the 1970s, the environmental movement was beginning, just, it was starting, was beginning. With great, with great sincerity and gusto, and, and we did a lot of things through those years, like adopted open space element. The APCD was just in its beginning stages. Guidelines for orderly development were in place. So it was a growing movement, and it's been with us ever since, and it's gotten the attention of the world, and the issues are, are very clear today, it seems, at least. And we have almost everyone talking about issues that relate to the environment, and relate to ecology, and relate to the earth, and relate to the air. And so it's fascinating. I do want to just make a comment about the Coastal Commission meeting that we talked about last week, just make one comment about that. Because it's deserving of a comment when you think of the youth, the young people who were at that Coastal Commission meeting. Many of them could only stay during the morning, but it was a group of people whom you really don't see at too many meetings about the environmental issues. And, and so it's a growing, it's a growing movement, a young, among young people. And many of the youth in my community are involved in environmental issues. They were involved with the LNG hearing, they were involved with different things that relate to the environment, like the city core people involved, high school students getting involved, and making public statements, and getting active. We really haven't seen that as we've seen it in the last year or so, so I'm very happy with that. So when the youth came to the Coastal Commission meeting, and they heard Sarah Wan, who's a commissioner, she's been there for some time, she's really an expert biologist and botanist, and is looked to by the other commissioners as being an expert. But when she said that the bird population that has been a subject of interest was no longer seen on the west side of the harbor, that was significant. She said that in front of the students that were there, in front of the young people that were there. And then when the violations were cited, and the comments from the commissioners, they heard those comments. And yet, we had a group of people on one side of the Santa Barbara Chamber for the Board of Supervisors meeting, mostly all adults, who were just deaf to those comments, didn't hear them, didn't seem to care about them. Yet, we had those young people there who did care about them, who were there for that purpose, to express their concern about the environmental issues at the harbor. So I hope that we all learned a lesson there at the Santa Barbara Coastal Commission meeting that we attended, just about everybody here. When we look at the young people and their deep interest and their great testimony that they gave, I've received so many comments from people about that testimony. So I hope that our sensitivity about the issues that they're sensitive about will match their sensitivity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to say I have three adjourned memories that we need to call out, that I feel like we should call out here today. And, and the first one is Mildred Bitzy Thompson, she's one of the county's oldest residents, and we lost her at age 107 this past week. We actually had her here in the boardroom a number of years ago, celebrating her birthday, and so it's always tough to lose those people that go back more than 100 years for us. And then Kay Ellen Volkman Maloney, for 26 years, she worked as a Ventura County Public Health Nurse, and she supervises along, is familiar with her, but she was instrumental in all kinds of programs, including beginning a number of the new Ventura County Health Services Program, the Child and Family Abuse Prevention Services, healthcare services for the homeless, but she did a number of things and was a really impressive person here. And then Harold C. Case, worked for Ventura County Fire Department, as well as the other people on this list, ask her to adjourn in memory. I also had the pleasure of attending two rallies for state funding, try to save our schools, Ventura Unified, Nojai Unified School District. And we have, we have some real challenges ahead of us in all, in all levels of government. It just reminded me, it's, you know, it's a county problem, it's a city problem, it's a school district problem, it's a state of California problem. It's going to be a real tough budget year for everybody here as we come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Park?
Thank you. I also would ask that the board close in memory of the people on this list, and I would like to call out Rita West, who is the mother of Mark Burley in Santa Rosa Valley, and I know he's gone back to England for the funeral, but we know that, you know, she will be sorely missed. Also, a couple of events, we had an amazingly huge Arbor Earth Day, is what we call it in Thousand Oaks. I was able to get the city back when I was on the council to do an Arbor Day, and then they've combined it with Arbor Earth Day, and this year, there, there were just probably close to 1,000 people out there easily. It was very well-attended, and it's a great educational experience for everybody. Also, another couple of events I went to is the Area Association of Water Agencies had a symposium, and it was interesting to hear, you know, a lot of the focus obviously is water and conservation of water, that it takes 50 gallons of water for one burger. If you want to eat a hamburger, it takes 50 gallons of water to, to make that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. And then also went to a, that wasn't the only thing I got out of the conference. I also went to a low-impact development conference that was put on by the City of Ventura, Brian Brennan, particularly the local government commission, Coastal Commission surf riders. It was a really well, also well-attended group of particularly staff planners, which I, I thought was great, and some public works people, as well as others, and just really looking at ways that we can design to allow for permeable pavement, for water to percolate into the ground, as they're shooting everything out into the ocean, which impacts flooding issues as well as water quality issues. So that was a really good conference. And I think that concludes my comments, and I'll have some more later on with an agenda item coming forward. We had the 23 widening ribbon cutting, which was kind of exciting, but that leads to our, my next agenda item, which is now looking at the interchange of the 23 and the 101, so we'll save those comments for later. Thank you.
Never satisfied, right? That's right. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. I too have a list to put forward to adjourn in memory, and thank you Supervisor Bennett for bringing up the loss of Kay Maloney. She really was, and I know she worked with many of us, but she was always so very passionate about public health and about her role there and, and reaching out to, to really serve the underserved population, and did so with just genuine passion and caring, and was just a real role model, I think, for public health nursing. On my list, I also have Anita Ruiz Settlemeyer, who worked with the County of Ventura and the Human Services Agency, and where she worked for 30 years in various capacities. She was a Santa Paula resident, born and raised, and lived her entire life in Santa Paula, very active also in the community. She, she worked for a short time as a civilian at Naval Base Port Weneme, and she's, will be missed by both her community and her church and her, and her grandchildren, and many in the community. And I submit this list. And I'd also just like to congratulate the Ventura County Community Foundation and Destino Legacy Fund. They held a event last week where they, through the dollars that they raised that are contributed to the fund, they're able to grant out scholarship dollars to very worthy organizations in our county, and they, and I bring this up because they, they really do help us to fill the gap with organizations who provide such wonderful services, like the Westminster, Westminster Clinic, who was there, and the Blanchard Library for their literacy program, and, and our own Ventura County Medical Center student program in the summer for, to give youth experience in the medical field, Latino youth specifically. It really was just a wonderful evening to celebrate with Destino and their success. They just started in 2000, and the monies they've raised now give them enough interest in, to put out scholarship dollars, and every year they get bigger and better in doing that outreach. So it was a, a nice event to, to celebrate with them and celebrate with our community organizations who do such good work and help us. The, what was that? I appreciate that there, I heard this morning that there was a, a good turnout last night for the public meeting on the Fisherman's Wharf proposal, and, and I think we'll probably hear more details on that, and, and obviously have a lot coming to this board regarding that proposal. But I, I appreciate, as we heard also this morning from our Casa Serena and the developers who are going to be moving forward with that part of the harbor project, that they are fully intending to keep us informed and involve the public and welcome the public and ask for public input. And I think we, we've asked them to do that, we will be looking forward to, to hearing the outreach and the comments so that we, as when we move forward to continue to revitalize the harbor, we do so with transparency and with clear public engagement. I think as we do move this morning on some Earth Day things, and talk about Earth Day, and today is Earth Day, that it is very important that we continue to, I think- we continue to, I think, as, as leaders, be able to work with our community to ensure that we are engaged in the discussion and engaged in the decision-making when it comes to the environment. And I know that we all have our, our passions and our, and our solid credentials when it comes to the environment. And when we talk about issues in the harbor or issues in any part of this county, that we, we do so with both the fact that, that we understand what the needs are and appreciate that the environment involves the entire public. When you talk about students speaking on the environment, I think that the harbor has been, has a, has a strong history of students who have been able to use that harbor and appreciate that harbor. And what we're trying to do is to engage even a broader population of our youth in that harbor. And it's important that we do that. And I think when, when, when you talk about whether or not there's been violations in the harbor, it is incumbent on us, and I think we all take that seriously, to look at those violations and, and call on our CEO and our director to make sure that those violations are addressed. And I know they are and have been and will continue to be. I, I think that the, the public input is very valuable to us, and, and we need to continue to be certain that not only do we appreciate when we have an independent body like the Coastal Commission that all have strong environmental qualifications and credentials, and we get a 9-3 vote in support of a project that has been addressed very thoroughly environmentally, we should applaud that and move on. So I appreciate the comments, and Earth Day is something we should all continue to participate in and look for ways that we can improve our local environment. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to adjourn in memory of the, the people on this list and call out one person, Les Reed. I mean, all of us, all the people, you know, everybody contributes to our, our communities. But this gentleman, Les Reed, was general manager of our Rancho Parks District from 62 to 65, so just more in a public way. But it's nice to see people doing those things. Also this weekend, the Boy Scouts had a jamboree out in our area, about 450 kids attended to that. That's all, we went out there and saw that in the LA and Ventura County Fire Departments came through with helicopters and did some kind of neat things. They also honored a woman who lost her husband there, too. It was, it was great to see. I also want to thank the, and all of us probably do, the Santa Paula Hospital and all the people up there who saved that infant's life. Yeah, that was quite a story where they just wouldn't give up. They kept working hard to do that and, and found that there was, they couldn't find a pulse, but then they found a pulse in the umbilical cord on this baby. It was, it was just amazing story that they weren't willing to give up and they, and, you know, end up saving this child's life. It's just a tribute to the hard work of these people at a great, great hospital, doing some great work. So that was nice to know. And then also, we have a new police chief in Moore Park, Ron Nelson, after a 21-year career of law enforcement, 11 out in Moore Park. And he then accepted the job after Jeff Matson left, who served Ventura County Sheriff's in the headquarters. So it's great, and we welcome him out there. And then it just also Supervisor Parks, we're going to make mention the 23. It's just great to see that thing happen. And we're now going to have electronic messaging signs and all the fiber optics and all the things that go on with that. It's, those are great to see. And it's just a thanks to Caltrans for all the work and everything that was done there. So again, those are my comments. I think we can move on now. All right? I'm going to kind of skip around a little bit to try to get some of our department heads that are out there. And we see Chief Roper out there, so we'll bring him down.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Bob Roper, Fire Protection District Fire Chief. I have the board item number 35 in front of you today, and this is asking you to ratify the cost-share agreement and authorize me to sign that and to direct certain appropriations by the auditor controller. This stems from the December 3, '06 fire, the Chuckle Fire out in Moore Park. It was about 13,000 acres. And actually, it started early in the morning as one fire. And then there was another fire due to the high winds, electrical lines dropped, and the two fires converged, and we ended up with a large fire coming into the city of Moore Park. You might ask, out of all the fires we've had over time, how come I'm coming to your board today with a cost-share agreement? And usually what happens is when we get done with a fire, what we do is we decide what lands our local responsibility area. Those are the lands that the Fire Protection District is vested in. Those are the incorporated cities that we protect and the, certain unincorporated areas. Then there's the state responsibility lands in the county that CalFire has responsibility for. And then there's also the federal responsibility areas, which is primarily in the National Park and the Los Padres National Forest. So when a fire burns in those areas, it never stops at the line. Okay? So what we have is, we have a system where we have operational people going out, putting out the fire. Then Abby Burns is in the audience. Abby and her staff are doing the other work with my chief officers, going through and then figuring out how many resources were on our land versus the state lands versus the federal lands. And we do this cost apportionment formula, okay, where we divvy out the amount of resources, the amount of time that were used on each of those lands. And at the end of the fire, what we then do is develop what a percentage is, is each entity, either local, state, or feds owe toward the total bill. The cost of this fire was about $6.7 million in total. This fire only burned on state responsibility lands and local responsibility lands. And it was determined there was a 45% cost to the Fire District and a 55% cost to the state. As we develop that criteria, then what we do is we take our total operating costs for suppression, suppressing the fire, and that is our in-kind contribution toward the total bill. And then in this fire, the, the issue here is, the fire was so large and our cost was so large that we actually owe CalFire additional money. So this board letter, what it's doing is, is recognizing what we owe CalFire as far as making the bill total. What we intend to do is now that we've addressed what the cost share is by this agreement, now we will be going back to FEMA and to the state and asking for the reimbursement. Abby and her staff spent an enormous amount of time going through all the, the legal process so that we document the hours worked, the overtime costs. And so the end result will be, is that the Fire District should only have a net cost of about $199,000, of which we will be filing a cost recovery claim with CalFire. We will be dealing with County Council on that in our usual proceedings, and we hope to get all or at least some reimbursement back of that $199,000. So this is the first time that we've ever come to your board with a cost-share agreement, only because the amount of money we expended did not cover the true cost of what the total bill of this fire was. And I'd like to say this is the last time we'll come forward, but as cost of putting out fires keeps increasing and so forth, this may end up happening again and again. So, but there's quite a bit of work, and I'd like to thank and recognize Abby for the work she and her staff put into this, because it's almost easier to put out the fire than it is to deal with all the cost recovery and the accounting for how you do this with state, local, and federal agencies. So.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to be with him in one fire, and we're riding in his car, and he's talking about how we recover it. I think you have to have a doctorate degree to try to figure this stuff out. It's just amazing, all the work you guys go through to try to get recovery for this thing. It's amazing. So, anyway, we have, any questions on this? We have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And then we'll vote. All right, sir, that passes. See you later. We have our healthcare agency?
Good morning, Chairman Foy, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Karen Davis, Deputy Director with the Ventura County Healthcare Agency. The item before you today is to recommend appointment and reappointment for several members of, of our Ventura County Healthcare Plan Standing Committee. This committee was formed by your board to meet the Knox Keen Public Requirements under the Act, and it oversees the quality of care review systems and our grievance process. The Chair of the Standing Committee is Supervisor Steve Bennett. And the members that we'd like your appointment on today are Selva Sasedo, Juan Mendoza, Letitia Geribe, Esmeralda Bolo, Catherine Sidler. And our physician providers are Dr. Stan Patterson and Dr. John Van Khauser. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We have a motion, other questions? We have a motion and a second. And then we'll vote. Great, there you go. Thank you very much. I passed unanimously. Can we go quickly to item 48? Tim Thonis is out there. We'll get him back to making sure our retirement is sound.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Foy, Ms. Robinson, Tim Thonis from the Retirement Association. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here this morning to discuss the results of our annual actuarial evaluation and request your adoption of the recommended contribution rates that were developed as part of that actuarial evaluation and as was prepared by the board's actuary, the Segal Company. The request to adopt those rates is made pursuant to Government Code Sections Number 31453 and 31454. Fiscal year 2007 was really quite a remarkable one for, for our Retirement Association. The plan assets grew by some $450 million, and we ended the year with more than, or almost $3.1 billion in assets available to pay benefits. The primary driver, of course, of that material increase in net plan assets was our investment performance, which for the year was 17.2%. If you drill down into that number a little bit, you would see that the three equity portfolios that we currently have, the composite return of those portfolios, net of all fees, was over 22%. Our real estate portfolio kicked in at additional 17%. And our bonds did better than our long-term expectation and returned some 6.5%. Add it all up, and you, you see a $450 million increase in net plan assets. Now, how that return impacts the actuarial report, if I could boil that down into two numbers for your attention within a report, a 70-page report that has nothing but numbers in it, is to focus on two numbers. And the first would be, the plan's funding status was improved to almost 88% from 83.5%. And the second, of course, would be the plan's composite or aggregate contribution rate, employer contribution rate. That rate fell by almost 2%, 1.88% of pay, from 19.36% to 17.48% of covered payroll. If you translate it in that in the dollar figures, excuse me?
From 19% down to about 17%.
17%, covered payroll of your retire, of your payroll. All of the contributions that, the costs are expressed, are expressed, excuse me, as a percentage of covered payroll. That, taking a look at what the covered payroll is today, if the rate didn't go down, it would, it's, it's probably, very conservatively, approximately an $8 million savings. I know many of you are probably concerned about, well, Tim, that's really nice, but what about what's happening today? Clearly, the financial markets have been hurt by the liquidity crisis, the liquidity crunch that first began in August of 2007, really manifested itself in November and January, November of 2007, January of 2008. Well, our portfolio has not been immune from that downturn. We are down about 5% for the first nine months of the year through March 31st. The first couple of weeks of April have been very, very positive. I think the S&amp;P 500 is up almost 4.25%. So we, we brought some of that back, you know, as of this morning. I will note that you do have some downside protection built into this actuarial process in terms of how it will impact your contribution rates. And that is the $288 million yet to be recognized within the actuarial process of gains that have been earned over the last four years. As you will recall from the presentations that our actuary has made to your board, Mr. Angelo discussed the five-year smoothing process for recognizing gains and losses. What this process does, of course, is to limit or dampen the effects of any one individual year and smooth out your contributions. So just in preparation for our discussion this morning, I took the opportunity to go back and look over the years and at the contribution history and, and try to correlate that to the, the returns of the plan. And, and really, it's not any one year, bad year, positive year, that has the, the most material impact. It's the succession of years. And, you know, what we've lived through earlier in this decade was the fact that we had 30 months, two and a half years of, of really, of poor investment performance, and that, you know, had a material impact on your plan's contribution rates, and of course, its funding status. So be happy to answer. I recognize you have a very long meeting this morning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the actuarial report.
I appreciate the report. Any questions?
I move acceptance of the report with the comment that I'm very proud of what the work that you do and the others in managing the retirement system. I served on the board for 20 years. It was an amazing experience, and that experience continues. And the fund has grown so much, even though right now we're problem times. But I think when I came on, the total fund was 100 million, and now what is it?
It's, today it was, it's about 2.95 billion. And at, at its highest, it was about 3.3 billion.
Thank you. Anyway, that's my motion.
Good. Okay, we have a motion, and I do sit on that board, and they do an excellent job. And I know they care deeply about the future of people's pensions, so thanks for what you do. We have a motion, and we're going to vote. Second?
I assume that comes with a guarantee of another 22%.
I'd like to.
Sure, why not? Go for it.
Yeah. How about eight?
There you go. Thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, let us move on to, I think we have our tax collector there, Mr. Matheny. That is number 47? Is that right?
Yes, Larry Matheny, your Treasurer, Tax Collector, Mr. Foy, and members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I wanted to take an opportunity to address your board on the success of our spring 2008 collection cycle. That wrapped up officially on April the 10th, and we're still getting some, some stragglers coming in. But all in all, it was a successful collection cycle. As you might expect, the April 10 deadline is typically the second busiest day of the calendar year for us, with the first busiest day being December 10. And the difference in the volume between those two days is, there's, a lot of people pay both installments before the end of December so they can get an income tax deduction for both of their property tax installments. So how did we do? Well, one of the amazing things I found was, there is a huge volume that has been absorbed by our website. And I know I've talked with your board about this in general terms before, but in some very specific terms, on the 10th of April, we did 940 electronic check payments over the web, plus an additional 914 credit card payments in an electronic format. So that's more than 1,800 payments that we processed that day by way of the internet. Now, to put that into perspective, I mean, these are all just numbers, and they don't mean anything to you necessarily, but that's twice the volume of what our cashiers did. And that's eight cashiers, people cycling through, because we, you know, it's almost cruel and unusual punishment to put somebody at the cashiering window for eight hours on the deadline day. So we, we rotate people through that cycle, but eight essentially full-time employees did half that volume. So it's as though we had the luxury of being able to bring in temporary employees and put them in place and get several days' work out of them, and then they're off. And we didn't have to train them. So I'm, I'm very pleased at the way So, I'm very pleased at the way the public has been accepting our Internet, and there's still some significant volume of people who use the telephone to transact a credit card payment. But by and large, the bulk of our electronic payments is over the Internet. Now, also, an important piece of all of that is that IT Services completed their work on a major revision of our website about a month before the deadline, and we were a little bit nervous about going live with it that close to when the crunch was going to hit. But because they did a significant amount of testing of it in advance, that went, by and large, very smooth. Couple of wrinkles, but, you know, they were insignificant in the whole scheme of things. At the moment that a wrinkle hits, it feels like it's always the worst thing in the world that's happened, but the speed with which it gets resolved is what really measures the impact. And our partners in IT Services were excellent in taking care of that. On April the 10th, our total volume was about 10,000 payments that we successfully processed through, or about $30 million in property tax revenue. And a key piece in processing that volume was the new remittance processing equipment that your board authorized us to acquire last year, and that performed flawlessly. Currently, we're running about, the good news is, we're at about $60 million more collected than last year at this time. That's the good news. The bad news is, that represents a smaller percentage of the overall amount that we're charged with collecting. We're running about 1.2% behind last year, and I think that it's fair to attribute that to the economic circumstances that our people here in Ventura County are trying to survive and move through. So, unless there's some dramatic change, I think we probably will have a higher delinquency rate by the time we close all of this up. Again, that's a mixed bag, because the teeter effect is going to mean that the county will have some additional revenue off of the penalty amounts that start significantly increasing July 1st and moving forward. We will eventually collect it, we know this, it's just a matter of how much time goes by before we're able to liquidate those taxes, and almost always, it ends up being on a voluntary basis as far as we're concerned. I think I had shared with you that at our most recent auction of tax-defalted properties, we only had two that were still on the list, and that was our first auction in two years. So, we have a very successful collection practice, short of actually selling property out from an owner, which is probably the most distasteful part of the job. I want to compliment IT Services for the support that they gave us. We had, on the deadline day, April 10, about somewhere between 3:30 and 4 o'clock in the afternoon, our system crashed. And that, that's an interesting challenge, because we're not able to draw any information up on the screens when a taxpayer comes to the front counter, and it crashed our website as well. But I envisioned a lot of hamsters on wheels downstairs, and they got the system back up again in very short order, and I was very pleased with that. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, but I want to report that we're very pleased with the way the collection cycle went.
Well, thank you, sir. It's great to see that the technology investing in is making a big difference, saving the taxpayers money and also making it more convenient for them. That's great.
So, did you hand out extra candy when it crashed? From online, or?
You know, it was extra candy, and I tap danced a lot and was looking for babies to kiss.
Well, great. Let's have a motion and a... We have a motion and a second?
Thank you for the report.
Thank you. We've got a little bit of time here. Let's go, is there going to... Do you want a break? You do? Okay, I guess we're going to take a, very good, we're going to take a two-minute break.
We'll call this meeting back to order and we'll move to our time certain, 9:45. And we have our recognition of youth volunteers. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. The county is recognizing youth volunteers who serve the Westminster Free Clinic on the occasion of National Youth Service Day. National Youth Service Day celebrates the positive contributions of young people that they are making to our communities. And the Westminster Free Clinic's a private nonprofit healthcare provider in the Caneo Valley area. And not only do they have the wonderful support and volunteer of our healthcare professionals that help run the clinic, but they also have at least 70 youth volunteers. And we have a good half of them, at least, if not a little bit more with us today. And I wanted to make sure and recognize these youth. And it's a great experience for them, I know. Actually, I had a daughter that was able to do it, too. And it's just such a wonderful experience and something you can put on your resume. But you also help so much our community, not only in the clinic itself, but also you can go out into your neighborhoods and do some outreach and let people know what wonderful services are available. And you also have firsthand experience in seeing these individuals who don't have any health insurance, who really do have some serious health issues, and that you're able to help. I think that's just wonderful. I'm so glad that you're able to do this. I'm glad that you are having this experience. And I also want to recognize you, because it's not the easiest thing in the world, too. So I'm going to come on down there. And Chairman Foy, if you'd like to join us, we have some certificates that we'd like to provide for you and get your picture taken and see that you are recognized. And also thank you very much for what you're doing. So let me come on down.
Can I say just a quick thank you? Chairman Foy, Board of Supervisors, and Mrs. Robinson, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm the Executive Director of Westminster Free Clinic. And the Board of Supervi-- or our Board, as well as all our medical volunteers, want to say thank you for really recognizing these fabulous young people. They're part of our medical team. And they don't expect any recognition, but it's really nice to let them know how special and unique they are. And they give over two years of their time, 12 months of the year, to helping provide health access to their community. And they do it selflessly. And they're just very, very wonderful people. And thank you for recognizing them. We appreciate it.
And we also have a resolution for you and the Westminster Free Clinic. And it reads, whereas Westminster Free Clinic, just what I said, is a private nonprofit healthcare provider in eastern Ventura County, staffed by volunteer healthcare professionals, serves over 5,000 local residents annually. And whereas, in a collaborative effort to maintain a healthy society and to reach out to residents who might otherwise have little exposure to healthcare, the Westminster Free Clinic brings together numerous willing partners in the community who are able to assist in providing a broad range of services and donate their time to ensure that regardless of income, all can receive help. And whereas Westminster's Free Clinic's highly regarded teen training program is a vital part of the work of the clinic while providing the youth volunteers with enriching and educational opportunities and inspirational mentorship in the healthcare field. And whereas over 70 high school students have been currently working under the mentorship of adult healthcare professionals at the Westminster Free Clinic, and these excellent youth volunteers are the first responders to the clinic's walk-in clients in need of health services. And whereas National Youth Service celebrates the positive contributions that young people are making in our communities. And I want to present this to you. And also thank you for your work on this. This is just, I think, one of the best things, one of the real shining lights in the Caneo Valley that you guys are there for people. So let me give that to you. I hope also you'll consider--
(applause) This is also Veronica, who's the coordinator of all these wonderful teams. And I wanted to thank her. She's the one--
I hope also that you will consider going into the healthcare profession. That's one of the growingest fields out there, you know. So if you're-- you always will be able to fall back on that, you know, if you want to move on to something else. Particularly with the aging population, not that we need to work just with the age, but--
Hey, we resemble that remark.
Supervisor Foy, no.
And come to work for the county. Come to work for the county. Public health nurses, County Hospital, please. Come to work for the county.
Okay. Okay. And then they want to do a picture for you. So what I was thinking, if you read the name and then hand it to one of us--
Which should I, uh? Sure. Natalie Pantoja? I'm sorry, Pat Lani. Sorry, Natalie. I said that wrong, I'm sure.
He represents students from Oak Park, Westlake, Newbury Park, Thousand Oaks, City Valley, two different City Valley High Schools, and then some practice schools.
I'd also like to let the students know that those of you who want to become doctors, we have a premier family practice program at Ventura County.
Juan Santos.
We're also looking for nurses, technicians, et cetera.
Thanks for coming out to see us. You guys are doing a great job. What an example for everybody else, huh? You guys willing to put all that time in. Thanks so much.
And thank you to the leadership at Westminster. Congratulations on the Destino Grant you received last week, which helps with this program. And to each and every one of you, we appreciate that you contribute and you give of your time and talent to help the Westminster Clinic do such a great job for all of us. Thank you.
I'd also point out that we always attend all of the Tobacco Settlement Committee hearings. And Westminster Clinic is really thought of highly. And in this very competitive time in terms of lack of funding, Westminster Clinic still is recognized for just how much of a contribution you make. So thank you to all of you for helping out all those people in our county that really need it. Thank you.
If I could just, Mr. Chair, comment and congratulate you. And I noticed you have gender integration. I think you have four, maybe five males. Congratulations.
Those nice young ladies are going to let the guys come, too, sometimes. That's good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Supervisor Long, you have something to do?
Yes, I do. And thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to present this next resolution proclaiming April 2008 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Unfortunately, to have this-- not unfortunate that we have to obviously deal with child abuse in our society, but fortunate for our county that we have a great team who does wonderful work. And it is truly a wraparound team that does this with our public health nurses and all of the agencies who cross lines, sharing at the table to deal with child abuse. And I know Judy Weber is here, our Deputy Director for Children and Family Services and others that she'll introduce. I'd like to, if I might, just read some comments from the proclamation. And then I'll step down to present that and talk a little bit about what are we doing in this month of April. Child abuse is a social problem. It impacts every community and state in our nation. And it affects the growth and development of children from every ethnic and socioeconomic group. We know, as with most of our programs, that early intervention, detection, and treatment are critical to really support our families. Child abuse prevention volunteers and professionals continue to assist families to decrease the incident of child abuse through prevention and treatment programs. And with our coordinated services and programs in our county, we achieved the lowest rate of substantiated child abuse neglect among California's 58 counties in 2006. And I expect we'll continue to do that. There is a need to increase public awareness and to promote supportive intervention and prevention programs and acknowledge the efforts and dedication of volunteers and professionals who help us to reach those solid statistics, but more importantly, to help us to reach these families, to really help them and protect their children. The Ventura County Board declares the month of 2008, April, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in our county. We encourage all of our residents to actively participate in bringing an end to child abuse. And there is, as always, a collaborative approach to this good work that is done in our county. And it's with the Ventura County Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, which is the Designated Child Abuse Prevention Council, our Ventura County wonderful public health nurses, Child Abuse Prevention Program, Behavioral Health, Human Services Agency, and all of law enforcement, along with volunteers and professionals who really reach out to help our children in crisis and need. And I know tomorrow there's going to be a wraparound conference that's going to take place in Camarillo with many of our partners with probation and human services and public health nurses and others. And that wraparound conference is only the second time this has occurred in our county. But it's-- we are the only county that has ever sponsored such a wraparound summit where you bring the collaborative teams together to really talk about how we are supporting our families and what we could do to strengthen our families. So I'll bring this down. And if you'd like to introduce who's with us and say a few words.
Thank you, Supervisor Long, members of the Board, Marty Robinson. Today, I'm really proud to present a program to you today that is more than intervention, as its primary focus is actually prevention. The Child Abuse Prevention Program is just what it says. It's a program designed to prevent children and their families from ever coming into the child welfare system. And I hope that you'll agree that that really is the outcome that we all should be looking for. So at this time, I'd like to first recognize Linda Henderson, who's here. She's the Director for Public Health. And then introduce Megan Stepi, who is a Master's in Science Nursing, Registered Nurse, and Public Health Nurse. Megan has been with the Ventura County Public Health Department for seven years. She is a Community Health Nursing Manager and the Director of Public Health Nursing. She-- her dedication and leadership of the Child Abuse Prevention Program is noteworthy. And she and the nursing staff have developed the Child Abuse Prevention Program into what it is today. So thank you, Megan, for your commitment. And also in attendance are the other public health nurses who actually see the families in their homes in the day, in the evening, on the weekend, whatever it takes. And those are Marcy Erickson, who's right here, Julia Ballot, Anne Schneider, Debbie Miller, Brenda Gray, Salita Dobrowski-- Dobrowski, sorry. And Diane Emmerich. So they're here. And I'm going to turn the podium over to Megan and Marcy, who's going to tell you a story that really illustrates the benefit of this program.
Good morning, members of the Board. I'm here to share about the Child Abuse Prevention Program, which is also known as CAP. CAP is a collaborative effort between HSA's Children and Family Services and the Ventura County Public Health Department. And the goal of the program is to keep children and their family out of the child welfare system. The program began back in October 2005 and is still in existence. We have six nurses in the program, public health nurses, and we're actually going to be adding one more come July 1st. So we're really excited about that. These nurses provide intensive case management and ongoing home visit services to children and their families. And referrals to this program primarily come from Children and Family Services, as well as the Domestic Violence Court. Children and Family Services refers to those cases that are determined as either unfounded or unsubstantiated for child abuse neglect. And Domestic Violence Court works with one of our nurses, and particularly in the CAP program, and refers those families with children that are subjected to domestic violence. Once in the client's home, the nurses complete an individual and family comprehensive assessment using various evidence-based screening and tools and identify potential risks for child developmental and social, emotional detriments. Parent bonding, parent-child bonding and attachments are also assessed. And based on the nurse's findings, they will provide parental education, as well as linkages to follow-up services, such as Behavioral Health, Tri-Counties, Head Start, Interface, just to mention a few. In addition to the intensive home visit services, the CAP nurses have set up education forums in the community, in our local high schools, in continuation schools, also in some of the outpatient drug rehab centers for caregivers and their children. And in these forums, the nurses educate this population, these populations, to identify healthy versus unhealthy relationships or abusive relationships. Also, they educate on maternal-infant bonding and promoting that, also on parenting, and how to avoid potential child abuse neglect situations. To date, CAP has served 1,191 families, which is really incredible, and 3,518 individuals. And of the most importance is that 96% of the children and families that have been seen in this program by these nurses, 96% remain in their homes. So that's an incredible outcome. The success of the program is acknowledged as well by the American Public Health Association and was presented at the Association's National Convening in Washington, DC, October 2007. And in addition, I've asked Marcy Erickson, who's a public health nurse working in the program, to share a client's story that might illustrate the benefit of this program a little more with you. So thank you.
Do you want me to speak first? Okay. Good morning. It's such an honor to be here in front of all of you today. I've been a resident of Ventura County for 28 years. So not only am I up here speaking as a public health nurse, but I'm up here speaking as a resident of the county and someone who cares very passionately for what happens here. And so this program, I feel very honored to be a part of it because it's keeping our families together. And that's been something since I was a very little girl that I've been very passionate about, is strengthening families and keeping families together. I came from a large family myself. And so I think that that-- and I just-- I wanted to mention Supervisor Flynn, I enjoyed what you said about the young people being involved in the Earth Day and the beach cleanup and all that. It just really-- it warms my heart in seeing all the kids that were here today, seeing what's going on in our county and how great of a place it really is to work. So thank you for that. And this program also allows me the opportunity to share something that's happening in our county that is fantastic, the Child Abuse Prevention Program, which we work collaboratively with the Human Services Agency and the Child Protective Services Agency, Children and Family Services, to keep our families together. As a public health nurse, we are afforded the privilege, actually, to go into people's homes, which is not something that a lot of people feel really comfortable with. But fortunately, we, being nurses, sort of have that "we're the nurse, we're here to help you" attitude. And people feel that. And we've had chances to go into homes where really, pretty much, people have felt like, this family, you know, let's just take those children and get it over with. And I want to share an example of a family that I had that opportunity to serve, that I'm actually still serving. And it was a family that was involved with Children and Family Services. And their children had been removed, but had been reunited with the family. And things were going-- it's a family with a lot of children. There's actually nine children total. And we were talking about five children at this particular time. One that was actually out of the home, that the thought was, I don't really know if we should reintroduce this child to the home because the four that are there are doing really well. But with the support of having a public health nurse myself, and then just being able to coordinate the other agencies around it, I actually did have the honor to go to court and say, you know, I think this family can do it. And this was a child, a baby, that was really-- And this was a child, a baby, that was really assessing it. As a nurse, you looked at it and you said, "You know, this baby has a lot of problems. She had feeding problems, she had developmental delays, she was just pretty much a mess." But because I was afforded the opportunity to go into the home and watch this baby when she was in basically kind of the chaos of her home, she was really thriving when she was home and with her family. And so with that support of seeing what this family needed, and the nurse, and the other agencies that are out in the community that could wrap around this family, we were able to reunite this baby into the family. She'll be turning two years old in August. Developmentally, she's 100% on target to where she should be. She tolerates all kinds of food. She runs around and plays with all her siblings like a little wild animal, is just very happy in her home. This particular family has a lot of obstacles with poverty and lack of education, and just history themselves of the parents of having been in the Child Protective Services system. But I see now a family with, there's actually six children because mom actually kind of got pregnant while the other one was gone, which unfortunately, we see a lot. You remove a child and they just, you know, mom will get pregnant to have another one. But, so she has another child, which she did deliver a little bit prematurely, but is at home. He's developmentally right on target. Mom has had her tubes tied, and there'll be no more children, and they're very committed to the six children they have in the home. They live in one of our hotels, and I'm sure all of you as being supervisors know, we have hotels in our county that could probably each have a public health nurse there at that particular hotel, and it would be a good service. But this particular family manages one of these motels. And what I think is one of the biggest tributes is they've actually became, become like a little watchdog for the community. They'll call and say, "Marcy, there's a family here that, you know, mom's using drugs, and I'm really worried, and what should we do?" And they've gotten to the point where they know to pick up the phone and call Children and Family Services, and they know, they go out into the community and they say, you know, "We know this program that you can get involved in, and they'll help you keep your children, and they'll help you." And so we have in the community, our little, I call her my little community watchdog now, actually, mom and dad, that they're out there. So that's just one small case of where you take a family that has so many obstacles, the children were behind on all of their medical things, they were getting SARM, you know, all the things we know of that were negative. They're up to date on their medical care, they've all had their dental care taken care of. You have six little children that are running around the family, loving their brothers and sisters and their mom and dad to the best of their ability. And maybe for some of us that are, you know, fortunate to not deal with poverty, we may go, "Oh, it could be better." But they're a very happy family, they're healthy, their medical needs are met, and they're together. And a lot of that, I really, I congratulate actually the Human Services Agency for what they do and the ability to work together as a team. So thank you for letting me share that today.
Thank you. (applause) I'd like to, I'd like to invite all the nurses down and the team here, and we're going to take a picture. Come on, come on. You know, and thank you for the story you just told, because as you're saying that I'm looking out at our probation folks, and I'm saying, "It's because of what you do and what we do with this program, those children may never see this group."
I was thinking those children may be sitting out here in that little volunteer group, you know, giving a little work over here.
Take a group picture. Thank you for your presentation and work that you do from the window, so everybody can get a picture.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Short, long frame. Short. Let me get just a second there. There we go. Mr. Chair.
When it's appropriate.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's, that's okay. (pause) I've got a few minutes to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to.
Morning, Board members. Paul Durkey from the County Executive Office. I'm here to request your authorization to issue up to $170 million of tax and revenue anticipation notes for fiscal year '08-'09. $170 million seems like a lot of money, but, and, well, frankly, it is a lot of money.[908.12][908.12](laughter) But, yeah, but the majority of those dollars actually go in as far as a prepayment for our retirement contribution for next year. About $130 million we're projecting at this point in time. Of that $170 million we're borrowing will actually be prepaid in July for our next year's retirement contribution. So a good chunk of it has actually gone almost immediately. The remainder is to bridge our cash flow needs for, between the months of Jan, uh, July and when we get our first property tax installment in December. So this is an annual thing that we've been doing, I think, since 1979, so asking your board's approval for the authorization and also the expenses incurred to provide that program.
Who's recommended action?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is this about what we had last year also?
We had $160 million last year, and last year, well, actually, it's the current year now, but $160 million last year. We're expecting a little bit uptick in our retirement contributions overall, and also we have another payment that we're going to be making. The interest rate we're currently paying is about, the yield is about 3.61. We're hoping to be less than 2% for next year, which kind of, you know, coincides with the downtick in the market that, you know, your treasurer is investing in also. So, so there's a give and take in that regard. One, good news is that we're paying less in interest, the bad news is that we're earning less in interest, so.
And isn't, even though we have had this problem with the housing market, we're still seeing an increase in the property taxes over last year?
Yes, we're expecting a 3% increase in property taxes from last year to next year. However, our overall general purpose revenues are projecting at 1.8% increase because of the other areas. For example, interest earnings, a lot of other areas in general purpose revenues are going down. So overall, we're under 2% increase in our general purpose revenues.
And do you have an idea what you're anticipating in interest on this?
We would expect to be under 2%.
Good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then, we're going to vote. You were waiting on me, weren't you? All right, so we'll move to, quickly to 39, I think our CEO will do that one.
As your board's aware, there was an error in the auditor's recommended property tax bond rate for the United Water Conservation District's 2007 and 2008 bonding. So that was adopted by the board, and in February, the auditor came forward and brought the problem to the board and indicated that you needed to adopt a new corrected tax rate, which the board did. As a result of the original error that affected about 25,000 properties, United Water Conservation District would have been shorted about $200,000 to pay their debt service. The auditor controller considered issuing corrected bills, including going back for the first, to take care of the first installment. That process would have cost us about $20,000, as well as a potential loss of up to $300,000 in revenue related to penalties that have received. In further discussion, consideration was given as a loan to the United Water Conservation District, basically to cover their debt service. The loss of interest to the county on giving such a loan would have been about $9,000. The final resolution, and I appreciate the auditor working this through, involving our office as well as United Water and their willingness, they decided that they had enough cash on hand to cover for their debt, and that they would use their reserves, and we would simply pay them the interest that they would lose at the $9,000. So that was the most efficient way of handling it, and the auditor's going to make an adjustment out of her tax administration charges that she would normally happen with the district of the $9,000. So I think it's a very reasonable, optimum resolution of the problem.
So bottom line is we're getting off with a $9,000 hit a year from now. Yep, pretty inexpensive. Okay.
The, the $9,000 cost would come out of this year's budget. We're portioning it now.
Say, out of this year's budget?
Yeah. With the revenue that she would normally receive, she's apportioning it out of this revenue.
Oh, okay. And Supervisor Flynn had a question?
Yeah, United does. Greek, yes, right.
I received a letter from the finance director.
Okay, great. We had a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Okay, we get it? Very good. I'm glad we got a good solution out of that. That's great. Can we go to our probation department real quick? Unless you want to sit there for a little while. Forty-six.
Good morning, Chairman Foy, Board members, and Mrs. Robinson. You know, Marty, every time I say that, I just kind of want to break into song, you know?[1235.83][1235.83](laughter) But I won't. Instead, what I'd like to do is ask your board this morning to ratify a submittal of a grant for funding for what we're calling a recovery classroom out at our Gateway School. And basically, what the money is going to do is, we're going to set up a classroom out at Gateway that's going to have children in it who have drug and alcohol problems. We will have, we've talked a lot this morning about wraparound services, and that's really what we're going to have out there for these kids, is wraparound services. We're going to have, we're going, probation's going to be there, obviously, the school's going to be there. We're going to have a psychologist. And basically, we're going to take a look at not only what the children need or what the kids need, but also what can we do to help fortify the family so they can provide the support to the kids who are working through their drug and alcohol problems and issues. This is what the federal government calls set-aside funds, and so there really isn't the normal application process that we go through to get a grant. When Congresswoman Capps was here a year, two years ago, looking at our juvenile facilities, we talked to her about some set-aside money to do this kind of thing. And when, we got a phone call and said, "Oh, it's here." And then, once they've set it aside, then we have to apply for it, and that's, we're now coming to your board this morning to ask to apply for the money that's already been set aside that we already had. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions? This sounds like a great program.
We're hoping, we're hoping that we can really help some kids get out of that cycle of the substance abuse and not attending school and...
That's wonderful. Well, okay.
I was just wondering, and would this then allow for them not to be in the juvenile justice complex?
This, that would be one of the things, rather than them, you know, being put in custody for that, they would be going, you know, they've been, I don't want to say kicked out of their home school, but they've been referred to Gateway because of their lack of attendance and substance abuse and all of that. And those kinds of things get them into the juvenile system and before the courts, and we're hoping that this is going to be an alternative for them coming into the facilities. They'll certainly go through the courts, you know, and be before the courts for reviews and progress reports and all of that. But hopefully, by providing these wraparound services to these kids in this classroom, we'll be able to keep them out of custody, absolutely.
It does sound like a great program. I was reading the paper also about the Sheriff Department also having a program to help some of the prisoners, you know, learn English, the second language, as well as other education things that can lead to jobs. So being able to provide as many services to keep people out of incarceration is a great goal.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great. Do we have a motion then?
Move the arm.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have Supervisor Bennett. Do you want to say yes, no, absent, abstaining? He's busy. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead? Thank you, okay. All right, we will move on to our 10:30 time cert.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And look at, look at all the Friends of Dora Crouch who are here.
And Supervisor Long, you have another presentation?
I'm on the house. I'm on the tree. Show who's absent.
I am so pleased to be able, no, I'm not pleased actually, because why we're doing
Yeah. Wrong, absent.
Wrong, absent.
this is she's going to be leaving us and leaving our wonderful community of Santa Paula and the many other things that she does in our county. But Dr. Dora P. Crouch, you know, I wanted, and I'm going to say it, Dora the Explorer, because Dora, for those of you who know who Dora the Explorer is, Dora Crouch has been one of those tireless advocates in our community who has been such an advocate for affordable quality housing since the early 1970s. She has had a remarkable life in exploring the world and exploring her academic vision and resources that she brings to all of us in this county. And as I said, she's going to be leaving us, so I wanted to bring her in here to thank her and to just appreciate everything that she has done for us in this county. She has selflessly served the needs of the most deserving, yet most underserved members of Ventura County, including our farmworkers, and most notably, she's a founding member of the Ventura County Farm Worker Housing Task Force and the Santa Paula Farm Worker Housing Committee. Dr. Dora earned a Master's and Doctor of Philosophy with recognition, was employed as a university professor for schools such as Universities of California in Los Angeles and Berkeley, California State University, San Francisco and Long Beach, as well as Stanford and Menzelier Polytechnic Institute. Upon retiring as a university professor, she became a self-employed historian until 2003, and her passion for her vocation is evident throughout five books, countless articles, and her passionate advocacy in every committee she works on and for. I feel like I need to have Dr. Dora please come to the podium and bring your friends with you. Let's surround her with all her friends. They are all here. There has been a celebration already, and I expect there's probably going to be others She has been an educator and an advocate for the community to recognize how affordable housing is necessary for the social, financial, and economic stability of our community. In addition to her work with the Farm Worker Housing Task Force, she has served as a chair, trustee, and volunteer of the Blanchard Community Library. So very passionate about academic literacy, education, information sharing. As an outstanding resident, recognized in the city of Santa Paula since 1991, Dr. Dora has enjoyed many hobbies, including publishing poetry, exhibiting a one-person show of photography, and volunteering. She also takes great pleasure in her seven children and nine grandchildren, which is probably what is taking her away from us. But it is my pleasure on behalf of the board to recognize Dr. Dora P. Crouch for 16 years of service to the community, extending sincere appreciation for her dedication, lifelong example of advocacy in our community. I know she has some of her friends from the League of Women Voters here, the mural project in Santa Paula. I'm looking around to make, to cover those many things that she does because she does so many things. And let me tell you about her carbon footprint. This is a woman who lives and breathes what is important to our earth and important to our community. I'll step down to present this and invite you, Dr. Dora, to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, your supervisors. I am honored to be singled out for you by this proclamation. You see, I brought with me a few friends, mostly self-selected...
for the social, financial, and economic stability of our community. In addition to her work with the Farmworker Housing Task Force, she has served as a chair, trustee, and volunteer of the Blanchard Community Library. So very passionate about academic literacy, education, information sharing. As an outstanding resident, recognized in the city of Santa Paula since 1991, Dr. Dora has enjoyed many hobbies, including publishing poetry, exhibiting a one-person show of photography, and volunteering. She also takes great pleasure in her seven children and nine grandchildren, which is probably what is taking her away from us. But it is my pleasure on behalf of the board to recognize Dr. Dora P. Crouch for 16 years of service to the community, extending sincere appreciation for her dedication, lifelong example of advocacy in our community. I know she has some of her friends from the League of Women Voters here, the mural project in Santa Paula. I'm looking around to make sure to cover those many things that she does because she does so many things. And let me tell you about her carbon footprint. This is a woman who lives and breathes what is important to our earth and important to our community. I'll step down to present this and invite you, Dr. Dora, to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, your Supervisors. I am honored to be singled out for you by this proclamation. You see, I brought with me a few friends, mostly self-selected. The only one I personally invited was Marion Tatharo. And she helped me organize the Santa Paula unit of the League of Women Voters. There had earlier been such a unit, but in 1970s, the members found themselves burdened with family life and let the unit lapse. So that when I came to Santa Paula in '92, if I wanted to belong to the League, I had to travel every month to Ventura, which is not a horrible thing to do. But when I suggested that we revive the organization in our city, original members Marion Tatharo and George Carlson, over here, were eager to do so. My motive was to raise the level of addiction in our city. And so we went fairly quickly to Old Encino Vitz Farm, and it was a polite success. We also followed the guidelines for new units and three-tiered structure of the League, local, state, and national. And we produced a booklet called Know Your Community, which is now, I think, out of print, but it does exist. They don't have a copy. And each member of the unit contributed at least one chapter or unit. And Gladys Beatt was the editor. This was my second publication for the League. The first one down in 2000 and 2001 was Too High a Price, which was a study of the local housing situation in the cities of the county. We called it Too High a Price, and the report came out before the census data were available, but we got approximate figures from other sources. The most interesting aspect of the work was seeing each member of the community at a different time pause, throw up her head, and say with wonder, "If I had to buy my house today, I couldn't do it." And these were women who were comfortably well off. Probably the things I most don't know for is my devotion to farmworker housing. When I first moved here, one could not even talk about this problem. By now, however, we have citizens groups advocating for farmworker housing in six of the 10 cities of the country, county. And our coordinator is working on getting the other four to also have their farmworker housing groups. I have been the convener of the oldest group in Santa Paula. We started slowly and carefully, with four of us meeting for breakfast once a month and praying about the problem. This led to the first summit, which was coordinated by Ellen Brokaw, with a standing-room-only crowd of 300 at the community center in Santa Paula, which was January 2004 or 2005, I have it in the cinema, but I can't remember which one it was. But at the end of the summit, 165 of the attendees were eager to sign up to work on the issue. So we were able to form the city groups out of those 165. They were spurred on by Dwayne Ellis's fine film, Mi Casa es Su Casa. Now we have, in addition to the city groups, a county-based group that meets monthly. And some of the people in this group are from the, like this one, from the task force. That organization was sparked by Ellen Brokaw, who later led a victorious and delightful fundraiser in the form of a concert by Kyle Milhouse, look-alike Chris Christopherson, in February of 2006. The group rallied to help the farmers after the disastrous freeze that year. In short, I have found Ventura County a centering place to live and act out my concerns for the little people. I regret that a problem with clots in my head makes it necessary for me to move to San Diego, where I will live only five minutes from my daughter Mary and her son Andy. But I find it encouraging to be appreciated by this august body, and this helps me cope with sadness of moving away. Thank you most sincerely.
Let me turn a little bit this way. We'll get a picture here. Sorry Debbie, you got to come around this way. And Dora here. If everyone can kind of sway around, maybe behind Dora this way. And now you hear why remarkable, how remarkable this woman is and why she is so loved and appreciated and will be missed. Anyone, any board members, want to say goodbye to Dora?
I don't know how you did it with getting your own degree and then being a professor and then having seven children, you know? It's pretty remarkable, and what a legacy you've left for the community too.
I have a message for you about Thousand Oaks. When we were going around the county telling people about what we learned, Thousand Oaks was the only place that would not let us come and speak.
Thank you.
What is wrong with that place?
Well, you're welcome to have my office if you want to come speak.
Had a couple more 10:30 time cert. Should we hear about rate increases, or should we hear about how the interest rates are going down? Why don't we talk about rate increases first? You just love coming up here, don't you?
This is the last one for this fiscal year on the water rate increases.
That's because this is over in a month, I know, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Reddy Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. This item is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase for Ventura County Water Work District Number 16. Waring Water Company, a private water company, provides water service to the community of Piru, except for about 10 properties along Pacific Avenue. District purchases water from Waring Water Company and serves these 10 properties. In this fiscal year, Waring Water Company has increased their water rates. We reviewed our budgets, and we are recommending a 5.9% water rate increase for the district customers. Should your board approve the recommended action, on average, it will mean an increase of $2.80 per month per residence. Water rates are subject to the provisions of Proposition 218. A 45-day notice of the proposed water rate increase was mailed on March 7, 2008. Clerk of the board did not receive any protest letters. Our office did not receive any telephone calls from our customers. We are recommending that your board approve the recommendations in our staff report. This concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Do you want to make any comments on any more water increases?
Move the recommended action and hold my nose.
It's tough being the deliverer of all this good news.
It is.
We have a motion and a second? So we're not going to see you for a couple months, huh? Not on this, anyway.
Not on this.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's absent. Sorry about that. All right, we'll move to item number 26. That passes unanimously.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. Laurie Matheny, Treasurer, Tax Collector. We're here with the, and I'm also joined by Bob Hanson, our Chief Investment Officer, to present the report of investments covering the month ending March 31. As the board letter reflects, we had a yield of 4.17% in the Treasury. Feel good about that. But the direction that it's going is something that would probably be better. Maybe we get ready to propose a rate increase, and we can impose it on our Treasury. But in any event, our balance is up to $1.7 billion. Again, as we are, that March 31 date is reflecting property tax payments coming in as well as various other funnels of money that come into the Treasury for our Treasury participants. And I'm ready. Mr. Hanson's ready to answer any questions that you may have.
One of the things that was handed to us was showing the drop in interest rates and how it affects our income. And as we saw back in 2005, it looks like we went through some of those tougher times where we saw interest rates all the way down at, what, 2.3%? And I guess we've gone from 4.7 here last, earlier this month, or earlier this year, is that what it was? And now we're down to 5.17?
It's, yeah, that certainly is the direction it's going.
It's going, and then the future is looking like we're going to be down into the threes, probably.
Well, we can predict fairly clearly, given that we're replacing maturing securities with lower-yielding securities, that this return is going to soften as we go forward a few months. Now, how far into the future we're going to be able to very accurately predict that is a big question. But certainly, the economy seems to be in a soft mode right now. And that would suggest that we're going to have lower than 4.17% vehicles to invest in as we're moving forward for some number of months.
I guess it goes back to what Paul Dershowitz said, that there's an advantage on one side. We borrow money a lot cheaper, but we make a lot less money too, so, okay.
Yeah, I'd just point out that just in February, we were at 4.7, and in March, we dropped to 4.1. So in one month, that's a significant drop. I mean, we were holding pretty, we were having slight declines from 5.0 down to 4.7 over a many-month period of time, and now... So I would think we should anticipate seeing this probably moving pretty fast because everything you're replacing it with is in the, is in the 2% range.
Well, we shed a few tears when we signed the trade tickets, remembering the fond days when the yields were higher. But you go through these cycles, and it's a natural cycle of things.
Not complaining, just having us anticipate that this will drop pretty fast now, it looks like.
I think so. Wouldn't you expect, Bob?
Good morning, Bob Hanson, Chief Investment Officer. After earning all these gray hairs and living to this age, I learned to anticipate questions, so I ran the yield on the portfolio as of today. And it's, oh, here we go, another sign of age. 360 at this point.
Wow, that fast.
But I see bigger, bigger accounts who, as of today, are 332, for example, the state of Cal. So it's just, as was said here, when you're taking 4% issues and replacing them with 2, it's pretty easy to do the math. And 1/3 of the portfolio turns over every 45 days. So, but we'll hang in there. And once again, the board mandate of credit, marketability, and rate, in that order, is standing tall. And we can read about some of our counterparts in other counties and cities who invested for risk and now are facing the price. Also, there was a couple of states during this last economic hurricane where they weren't able to pay the dollar out to their customers. They had to discount it because, so it wasn't a dollar-for-dollar share. They had to take some losses. So we're in very good shape. And we, to conclude my remarks, and what you should take with you is we still hold the top rating for credit and for volatility from Standard and Poor's.
I know a lot of people I talk to, it's not, this isn't a time we're worried about making money, just hanging on to what you got, so.
Well, somebody said, you know, if you make 0.05 higher, nobody's going to throw you a ticker-take parade. But if you make 0.05 less or something, goes defunct, you'll definitely read about it.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any other questions? We have a motion to move, to accept this, and then a second? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. You got to get in connection with Reddy. He can get those rates going up, you know? All right, so what else have we got here? 37? Okay. 37, our CEO will deal with it.
Yes. I don't believe there's anybody here from the library. So item 37 is a ratification authorization for the library system to accept a donation in the amount of $200,000 from the Camarillo Friends of the Library. And it will be used for buying materials, increasing the book collection at the Camarillo Library. So that's the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put the motion forward to support that. The Friends have just been tremendous. They've given probably close to $3.25 million to the library system just over the last few years. So move the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second?
It is a beautiful library they have. I encourage people from other communities to go check out the Camarillo Library.
That's right. Free.
Okay. And then we'll move on to 40. Supervisor Bennett?
I'd like to appoint Lois Manning to the Developmental Disabilities Board, Area 9. That's my motion.
That's the motion. So we have a second?
Chair Foy?
Yes, ma'am.
I also have an appointment to this. That's on, I think, the Denim 53.
What's that? We weren't done voting? Now we're done? Okay, hold it. So we had, you had a denim, what, 53? Same, item 53?
Yes, and this was also to the same board to appoint Connie Riesley, a mother of an autistic child and one very much supported by the area board for appointment.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? No, that's fine. That's fine. I was just, okay. So we'll move on to 41?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, 41 is a, since this is Earth Day, it seems like it's an appropriate day for us to do this. But we have our CEO staff working on our Climate Change Action Plan, and I'm looking forward to more things being rolled out from the CEO's office, identifying some of the things that we're doing. But we have the potential here at the county level to also try to reinforce and motivate others that are out there by publicizing good things that other companies and organizations are doing. And the idea would be that we would spend the course of this next year creating this awards program and announcing these award winners next year at Earth Day here. And to try to keep the cost from being an additional burden on the CEO's office. We're willing to do the expenses and the mailing and that kind of stuff here. But I would like to invite all the board members to, whatever suggestions they have, input, however they would want to be involved, it'd be great. What we anticipate doing is sort of having this conversation today and taking any other input. And then around June, mailing out notices to as many people as we can and look to the board to help try to get the word out. I know our CEO, Marty Robinson, suggested, you know, we get it to VACIDA right away. I'm sorry, EDCBC, yeah. And, but VACIDA would be another organization that we would get it to, and it was simply that idea. So nothing is locked in concrete here. The other thing I would point out is we have had, you know, some questions. Well, isn't there going to be a word for solar? Isn't there going to be a word for green buildings? And I think that when you narrow it down like that, it actually makes it more challenging. If we just say it's technology-neutral, in other words, any combination of solar energy efficiency, green building, waste reduction, trip reductions, et cetera, whatever anybody wants to apply for, it's, you know, you can mix and match, et cetera. But it would give us an opportunity to try to highlight some of the good things that are going on around this county. On the radio, it was just so appropriate, on the radio coming in this morning, was the CEO of Shell talking about the great value in having sort of everybody grab a piece of this and that it actually, you know, his push was that it would be, it will be done better if everybody, you know, advances and pushes the ball up the court rather than having one big mandate come from on top. You can debate that one way or the other, but certainly, to whatever extent people are doing this, the more we can reinforce it, the better off we'll be in Ventura County. So that'd be my motion to move the recommended actions here.
You said there's one in Ventura?
Yeah, it's called Marina Village.
Great. What's that? Oh, was that right?
You'll have to try it.
He's right to them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, I'd certainly support this, and congratulate, applaud you, Supervisor Bennett, for willing to take a leadership role on this, on this, because I think it is important that we recognize people who are taking deliberate, purposeful, and steps to really, to really take a piece of what climate change is to them and make a difference. My son, who is now 18, every year of his elementary school, they all participated in Earth Day, and I think we have a generation, and probably a couple of generations of our youth who are now very informed on Earth Day, and what they should be doing, and how important it is to take action, so I think that's, although his carbon footprint is way too large, because he's 6'7", 250 pounds, but, I'm working on that.
I don't know what you can do about it.
Yeah, I'm sending him off to school, ride a bicycle, go to school.
No more hamburgers.
Yeah, that's right.
All that water.
And certainly, the list that you've already touched on, and Supervisor Parks just did too, to add VCTC, Environmental Health, and others, to reach out to them, to ask them to, to help identify and recognize, because I think the more we do, people learn from one another best practices, and we're able to build on some success here locally. I'm going to provide, because I didn't do it under public comment, but it is very related to this, and it really, it's the Energy Efficiency Portfolio Quarterly Report Narrative of VCREA, the Regional Energy Alliance. And this is going forward to our public utility partners, asking them again for this next round of funding, but specifically on the second page of the document, it talks about completed projects for the first quarter of 2008, and you see it includes cities and schools in the county, and some of our community-based organizations, and the kilowatt savings already received and successful programming through the Regional Energy Alliance, certainly a piece of that carbon footprint, everything we do, every kilowatt we save, every retrofit we do, and, you know, and to take what we have with the Regional Energy Alliance, and the Technical Advisory Council of the Alliance, which are the practitioners, and to help them to, help them to help reach out into the community, to see who's doing what. So, I think it's a wonderful idea to start recognizing and having on a regular basis recognition of what we're achieving in this county for climate change.
If I may, I also forgot to mention, you reminded me with the energy, the city of Thousand Oaks is actually having on May 14th, a open house to celebrate, they have an incredible solar-powered waste treatment plant, sewer plant, so, this is something that they're having an unveiling of their, excuse me, solar unveiling at 11 o'clock on May 14th at their Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, and it concludes at 12 o'clock with a delicious barbecue lunch, which might be chicken instead of beef, so it saves water there.
Tell them, that's right.
Well, thank you, and, you know, as you pass this out, Supervisor Long, I was reminded of two things, number one, the SARA would be obviously a great organization to contact to get more recommendations, and two, you've been working with the SARA for quite some time, ever since their foundation and stuff, so, everybody, everybody up here is chipping away at this in different areas, so thank you for that service and letting me know about this. And as we roll this out in June, we'll bring that back to the board as sort of another reminder, to try to get it out. Again, if people have suggestions, input, et cetera, we'd be happy to take that and try to put it together into a good program that we can all feel good about when it comes back. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion, or do we?
Yeah.
Pardon? Vote, okay.
Could be something like the March of Dimes, the company that, you know, saves the most kilowatts. And so far, from this list, Ventura County's winning.
All right, well, why don't we go to number 27? The Harbor Department is here.
You want me to finish first? Good morning, Lynn Krieger from the Harbor Department. This is just the revision of the Harbor ordinance, this is the third time you've been exposed to this, but really the first reading today. The second reading will come back to you in two weeks with any changes that you might make today. There have been a few changes that we have made since the meeting on April 1st, I don't know if you noted them, I'll just point them out, the most significant ones out quickly. The first is on page six of the Red Line, which is item, or section number 6404-3, which is about races and exhibitions, and is the permit section. It does clarify that the events are in the harbor, outer harbor, beaches, public areas, or private leasehold areas in the harbor. It does provide a definition for organized events. Organized events on land include but are not limited to weddings, car shows, memorial services, markets, art shows, and so on, where 10 or more persons are expected to attend, to make that clearer. And on the water, organized events on the water include but are not limited to competitions, boat shows, boat operation training, group boating, et cetera, with two or more vessels. So, at least there is some definition.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Where you said where 10 or more people are expected?
Right.
Is that if they're paying to be there?
No, this is, we're trying, we've had a very hard time with this section, I mean, we were asked to make some clarification to this, but for example, if you have 13 people in a family who come down to a picnic table and bring a cake, that's not an event, and we would send them away. But if you have 15 kids and two jolly jumps that you're gonna tie down in a public park and so forth, that is an event, and does require a permit, because you're taking space from other members of the public. So, this is the best we could do, we went round and round about this between, among ourselves, and then with county council, to get it as clear as we could.
How do you notify them? So, if I'm just saying that we're going down for a birthday party for a kid or something, and a bunch of families are coming, and they have this jolly jump, how do they know to get a permit without getting in trouble for doing that?
You know, it's surprising, and I don't really handle this, Jack, Eva, the Harbor Master and Harbor Patrol handle it. Most people who are considering having equipment, or bringing in chairs or so forth, know enough to come by and say, what do I have to do to do this in the park? Or they make a phone call and find out, they either call City Parks, or they call us. So, it hasn't been a big problem. Very rarely do we have an event that's not been permitted. Right, the city of Oxnard is also very familiar with the process, so if somebody calls there, so we have people recruit in.
I think other park districts throughout the county have the same requirement.
Eva, there's number 10 people.
Right.
And then on page 10, bottom of page 10 again of the Red Line, section 6406-7, we have stricken the line that said, that dealt with the nonprofits. Also, a lot of the discretion of the director are signs and announcements for harbor events and nonprofit organizations. That line has been struck from the, from the document. We believe we're well-covered here without that, and since it was of some concern, we took it out. Other than that, there are no real changes, except for stray commas or capitalized letters that were inappropriate since the last time we saw it, we keep looking for small errors that show up in these kinds of documents. Unless there are questions?
Do we have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I noticed the, those light, what do you call them, hydro, hydrofoils?
Right.
The plain?
Ultralights?
Ultralights, there you go. That we are excluding them from our harbors, and the Hollywood Beach and Silver Strand Beach, but we can't do anything more, can we, in terms of expanding, because that's just what's in the unincorporated area out there?
Well, that's what the county owns and is covered by the Harbor Ordinance, there isn't any other area covered by the ordinance unless you were to expand the area that's covered, and then we'd be getting onto the Navy Base and into the city. So, the city already has such a ban, I believe, that's right. So, we copied their language to make sure that where our borders meet, for example, up by the Embassy Suites Hotel, it goes from being a county beach to the city beach, and we have the same language.
Okay, and so with the combination of both the city and the county, it pretty much exclude the use of them out there along the beach?
Correct.
Because I know it's been considered to be bothering lease terms and other, thank you.
You aren't gonna fly yours out there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions? Otherwise, we're gonna have a speaker. We have Preston Davis?
Good morning, Gordon. I'm Preston Davis, I live in Oxnard. It hasn't been talked about much, but there's a proposition that she's gonna put into this new ordinance about turning the Harbor Patrol officers into peace officers. And I've done a lot of research on this, a lot of friends in the police department around the area, they gave me a lot of information on this, and there's a state ordinance about peace officers, and what it takes to be a peace officer. And my concern is, well, number one, I believe that they should be peace officers, the Harbor Patrol should be peace officers. It makes a lot of sense, they need to be able to enforce the rules and regulations down there with some authority. We talked about, in Oxnard the other week, about them having weapons or not, I can't believe that they take all these courses of training and not carry a weapon, I just can't imagine that, because the training is included in the, in the basic training. My concern is, it says that there's no physical impact to any department tied to this action. Again, I've done some research, if you convert the Harbor Patrol guys who make, whatever they make an hour right now, or a month, into peace officers, their rate of pay should go up accordingly. Consequently, their retirement, if that's such a thing, should go up accordingly. The training could be minimal, they could be trained at Ventura College for a minimum training, but they have to take the basic course of training. It's a requirement to be a peace officer, take the course, you can't just become a peace officer. You'll have to buy weapons, if you use weapons, you have to buy badges and uniforms and let other vehicles. There's an impact, a physical impact to all of us for this. My concern is not that they want to be peace officers, but kind of the hiding of the costs, there is a cost involved in this thing, it's not gonna be minimal, it'll be a substantial cost to the county. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Could we have the hiders come up here? Could the hiders come up and tell us?
That's me, I think, that's what I hear. Yeah, I talked to Mr. Davis briefly at the April 1st meeting as well, that is an unchanged section of the ordinance. Harbor Patrol officers are categorized as what's considered limited-duty peace officers, they are not armed, they don't have full-post training, but they do have training, they have criminal justice training and other kinds of training, plus the Coast Guard training and certifications and other things that they need. So, this is not an area that's changing at all.
So, we're keeping a status quo with that?
Right, they already have safety retirement, they are just not full peace officers.
They already do have safety retirement.
Yes. They're light duty, or they're limited-duty peace officers.
But, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
But they will, they can be authorized to carry weapons if the local authority gives them that authorization.
If they were authorized, then we would require full training.
By this authority?
Right, but there's no, we're not asking for that at this point, I'm not frankly even a supporter of that, nor is the Harbor Master. Our officers don't even carry pepper spray.
And that could have happened a year ago, or two years ago?
Right.
We're not changing anything, that's been the case.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just to make certain here, we're not evolving into a situation where they will carry weapons, even though it takes permission from this authority here. In order to carry weapons, they have to have that classification of peace officer.
Correct.
So, there's no, there's no intent on your part to incrementally move them into that?
No, in fact, I prefer they stay as far from that as possible, and I would rue the day we had to come back to you and ask for that kind of, it would take. We get very good backup from Oxnard Police Department and the sheriff, and so far, that's worked out just fine.
Just while you're there, Mr. Chair, with your permission, how about the fishing ban? You don't specify areas, so how we, how is that going to work?
I believe that's in an exhibit, we're talking about right behind the Breakwater Jack, you wanna come and help me with that, because you enforce that.
But is there specified areas for, that is, are prohibited?
Basically, just along the revetment, all around the harbor, we're basically prohibiting them from being on private docks or the public docks, due to the bait, stuff that's left behind, we're not restricting them from being able to fish along either a revetment or along the jetties.
No restriction where they do fish now?
Correct.
Which is in that Oxnard, near that Oxnard Park?
Oxnard Park over by, on the west side, no, it's still a main.
And not on the main jetties as well, there are some people who fish from there, and that's still fine as well.
Okay, so, we're not gonna carry guns to go after those unruly ultraplane people and all this?
With their fishing lines, no, no planes.
Move the recommended actions here. So, we have a motion? Do we have to do a reading, do we have to do anything? Yeah? Second, okay.
Title of the ordinance? Ventura County Ordinance Code, Division 6, Chapter 4, Ventura County Harbor Ordinance, repealing and reenacting formerly ordinance number 2829, adopted April 9, 1974.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second, and a vote? Okay, and we'll move on then to, it was Janus? Okay, I thought it was me, I just didn't look up at the right time, it didn't show up. How about if we go to item 42?
42.
42, Supervisor Parks will do this. You ready to go?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier this morning, both Supervisor Foy and myself were lucky to attend the ribbon-cutting for the 23 widening project, something that was remarkable, and the fact that it was actually done and finished earlier than they had anticipated, and I think they may have even been a little under budget too, something that we should all hope for in the future too, and really offer our thanks to Caltrans on that one. And one of the reasons that we were able to move this project sooner was because the, we had, we had been able to put together the environmental documents in advance, so when funds were available, we could jump on them. So, that's something, that's something that we can do, and I know Congressman Gallagher is looking at moving forward with trying to secure that funding, so this would just be asking the board, and I'll go ahead and make a motion for us to send a letter to Congressman Gallagher, expressing our support for obtaining funding for the environmental studies and design work necessary for the widening of the 101-23 interchange. And this project is needed, particularly since we're adding more cars to the freeway, and it will help take care of an existing problem that we have today, so, that would be my motion.
So, we have a motion and a second, and a vote? Okay, and we'll move on then to, it was Janus? Okay, I thought it was me, I just didn't look up at the right time, it didn't show up. How about if we go to item 42?
42.
42, Supervisor Parks will do this. You ready to go?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier this morning, both Supervisor Foy and myself were lucky to attend the ribbon-cutting for the 23 widening project, something that was remarkable, and the fact that it was actually done and finished earlier than they had anticipated, and I think they may have even been a little under budget too, something that we should all hope for in the future too, and really offer our thanks to Caltrans on that one. And one of the reasons that we were able to move this project sooner was because the, we had, we had been able to put together the environmental documents in advance, so when funds were available, we could jump on them. So, that's something, that's something that we can do, and I know Congressman Gallagher is looking at moving forward with trying to secure that funding, so this would just be asking the board, and I'll go ahead and make a motion for us to send a letter to Congressman Gallagher, expressing our support for obtaining funding for the environmental studies and design work necessary for the widening of the 101-23 interchange. And this project is needed, particularly since we're adding more cars to the freeway, and it will help take care of an existing problem that we have today, so, that would be my motion.
So, we have a motion?
Sure.
And a second? And, what's that? Push their motions, and first and second, okay, there we go. And let me just ask a question, how does this, how do we deal with all the different things required in the county? I mean, are we asking anything in regards to, is there something else happening in Camarillo that we need done, or Ventura, or what are you doing?
This, this project is on the Transportation Commission's list, is the priority project that?
Oh, it is, okay, good.
This isn't anything new, it's just a way that we can move it forward sooner, and hopefully, all the projects can then move up too. then move up, too.
Okay, good.
And I believe that Congressman's office also expressed an interest in working with us to bring this, to move this along.
And I think a similar letter was also sent from the Transportation Commission to Congressman Gallagher also, who has also been, was also key in helping us to get funding for the 23 widening.
Right. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Very much so.
And we're vote. Supervisor Bennett is absent at the time. There we go. Pass unanimously. And then we'll go to number 43. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. Forty-three is, I have a map that should be coming up, and I'll provide this also for the board members, because there was a question on the item as to exactly what properties. First thing I'll say is, the State Coastal Conservancy has been doing excellent work in this river corridor project and looking at the, developing this Santa Clara River Parkway and working with willing properties. So, there isn't an issue here of someone taking property. It is a willing, willing project that they've undertaken, and they've been moving ahead piece by piece, acquiring properties and using State Coastal Conservancy funds and working with the Nature Conservancy additionally for this wonderful Santa Clara River Parkway project. So, the letter is a request to support the proposal that will go before the State Coastal Conservancy body for the second, for additional disbursement of monies to acquire these two properties along the Santa Clara River Parkway. And the initial funding of 9.2 million was appropriated by the legislature in 2001 for this project. It is a 23-mile-long corridor, starting at the mouth of the Santa Clara River to the Sespe Creek confluence, and this is an additional piece of that. So, the request is really for the board to be able to send a message to the State Coastal Conservancy that we continue to support this project, continue to support using the dollars that have been, coming from bond dollars, basically, and from, to the Coastal Conservancy for this project. And the two parcels identified as A and B are the ones that are in this board letter and part of the staff letter to the Coastal Conservancy. So, that's my motion.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What happens when these, unlike A or B, what happens to this land after it's acquired?
The project is really to do restoration, biological and habitat restoration, and to actually have a Parkway, you know, not a paved Parkway by any means, but a Parkway for public access to enjoy this natural habitat and to be able to have, have it as a Parkway.
What's, what's on there right now?
Oh, it's all raw land.
It's not farmland or anything else?
Well, no, no. If, if, if some of it is farmland, again, it's been willing sellers.
Okay.
Who, who aren't farming this, along this, this edge of the river. And part of it is because they've either, you know, lost property from various floodings, or they, it's property that continues to flood. So, another component of this, and the Conservancy's working on this, is with our watershed protection district for flood management, that these properties will become natural areas where flooding can occur and thereby, you know, taking pressure off of other areas where we don't wish it to occur along the reaches.
Right.
And they can continue to use the properties, even though it's now under this new ownership.
You mean somebody who can use it?
The farmers.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we didn't, because I noticed there's a lot of farmland up next to, and if somebody sprays or something, and now it's in this concern, they can't spray near that. I don't want to limit what farmers are, were able to do.
Yeah. They have really worked closely with the farmers and, and again, the willing property owners to work through those questions and get, and get agreements in this acquisition.
Okay. Great. Yes.
Yeah. The, this, I think it's a great project going forward, and so I applaud you for having the resolution. You know, the second site is even down in my district there, you know, at the mouth. And what, what's one of the real pleasing things about us is that the farmers are genuinely really supportive of this. And it allows us to start to make progress on that soft solution that we've been looking for. You know, this will mean fewer levies, smaller levies, less need for levies in the long run. And the Nature Conservancy's been a great asset for us in terms of moving this whole project forward. So, I will strongly second your motion when you make it.
That is my motion.
I'll second.
Now, this is also a wonderful example of being able to allow for flood control and not have to do the infrastructure improvement that often leads to actually more and faster water into the, into the channels. And I think as Yolo County has some 60 miles of area along their, I think the Sacramento River there, that they purposely allow to flood, and in the meantime, it's being used in agriculture. So, it's a nice ability to continue to farm and, as well as to use it for flood control. So, it's just a really good example. I'd love to see this in the Magoo Lagoon area, too. We have farmland there, and that would be benefited by a project like this so that they can continue in farming and we don't have to spend a lot of money continually doing flood control improvements.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Okay. I'm sure it passed? It did. All right. Supervisor Long, you want to bring up this next one?
Yes, thank you. And along with Supervisor Foye, and please join in. We brought this forward to the board at the recommendation of the Regional Defense Partnership of the 21st Century. And it is a recommendation that has been carried forward to most of our cities, asking them to join in. And the issue for us, this is a proposed LNG operation that is really off of the coast of Los Angeles County, but the, in the document, there's, and I, Roberto, all these additional information was provided to the board members and their packets, right? Yeah, thank you. Which is the summary of the application proposed and the map. And the map is important because as you look at this, there are sites identified for the, basically, ship-to-ship transfer of the, of the gas. And the site that is of great concern to both our Navy partners, but, and then to our community partners with the Regional Defense Partnership, is the one that's identified as STS-1, is the offload site of the Woodside Energy Project. Again, this is a very specific issue, narrowly defined because of its encroachments upon the naval base Ventura County. And so, the, the request was to have the board join in with some of the cities, Ventura, Camarillo so far, and I don't know the update on the other cities. I think Port Winomee was to hear it, and Oxnard, to join in, to take a position to oppose this preferred alternative STS-1 because of its encroachment issues on the naval base.
Yeah. I agree with you. One of the commitments that we had made, I know, being back east at the Navy's, talking with them, is that we would do everything we could to try to keep this open and unobstructed. I want to make sure that we, even county council standpoint, we're not making a recommendation no or for LNG. That has nothing to do with this situation. Our goal is just to leave this test site open, this test range, and not have anything obstruction, any obstructions in it. And that's what this is all about.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, of course, support this, but it does raise some questions in my mind. And, and I understand the process of transferring from large ships to small ships and so forth. And it is in LA County, and it would be near LAX, the land portion of it. However, the letter, the letter itself kind of begs the question, begs the question, if this isn't acceptable, then is there going to be an acceptable site on the part of the letter writers? You, Mr. Foye, and you, Mrs. Long. Is there an acceptable site? Kind of begs that question. How would you answer it?
Well, from, from my standpoint, I said, I don't, I don't know. County Council looked at, we're not making, I don't think we have any, what would you call it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your board is always concerned about avoiding taking a position that would be evidence of prejudice against a possible permit application that could come before you. In this particular instance, after discussing the matter with Supervisor Long and reviewing the application and the maps, we have concluded that it is highly unlikely that any permit application would be coming before your board. So, you wouldn't be giving evidence of prejudice against an application if you take this narrow act of opposing the one ship-to-ship transfer location. If you were to take a position in opposition to the entire project, I would still have some reservations about that. There's an outside possibility that there may be some APCD involvement with this project. And so, given the narrow item that is before your board today, I won't raise any legal objections to, to the position against STS-1.
Right. Okay.
Just have some kind of a comment here. It's, it's an obvious strategy, in my view, on the part of the company, to identify a site within the test range. And you know that's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. So, I don't want my vote to be understood as supporting any alternative site. So, I want to make that clear. By supporting this doesn't mean that John Flynn is recognized. There may be another site that I would support.
I think our goal is to be as narrow as possible on this, but just to say we don't want to.
But it can be misinterpreted, and already, the community is beginning to interpret it somewhat differently.
Right.
But Oxnard has taken a fairly strong stand against LNG until it's proven to them, at least, to be safe, number one. Port Winomee has taken some vote. I don't know if they've taken a specific vote on, on this item yet, but the people that live in the coastal area, in the populated areas such as Oxnard and Port Winomee, are very concerned about, about this as candidate Pavly is and Congresswoman Caffs. So, I'm more in that camp than any other camp. Pavly and Caffs, so.
Supervisor Bennett, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to check with county councils, my understanding on this. This is narrowly crafted, et cetera. What would be, what would get us into that slippery slope is if it was, if, if we said any project, project that may need a permit from Ventura County down the road is not acceptable to us, then we would be into this issue that you're talking about in terms of prejudging the project.
That is correct. That would be strong evidence of bias and prejudice.
So, so, so I don't think it's appropriate for us to, to answer a question, what would we support or not support? Or are we willing to say we're opposed to everything just because of county council's advice? It would actually, if, if you were somebody who didn't want an LNG project, the last thing you would want is the board to prejudice itself and therefore have the applicant be able to have automatic approval of whatever they came forward with and stuff. So, that's why, when this one came forward, I asked the question, I just wanted to make sure. And county council's opinion is that it's, because it's an LA County project and narrowly crafted, it's not going to prejudice us in any way. But we do, that's something we always have to be careful on. And in fact, this board unanimously took strong action at APCD on the last LNG project. But we were able to do that because the board had held its fire and had not prejudged the project in advance, so that when we sat as the APCD board, so I think it's important for us to be able to take, make sure that we point that out.
Absolutely. I think the evidence of prejudice issue should be taken seriously because we, at some point, may have been asked to do, make some decisions on land, on the land use issues related to prior proposals or even future proposals. So, that's why I, I was very careful, and I appreciate county council's advice and the narrow description of this action. So, I would move the recommended action.
So, we have a motion, and I'll make a second on it.
In my yes vote, I've already qualified.
Yes. Yeah, we understand. Is that what you wanted?
Hmm?
Okay. We're not seeing that up there anymore? I missed it? Oh, you just went so quick. It was unanimous. Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. All right. And we'll move to 45. And this is, what I'd like to do is, is have us support the legislation, the AB 1842, Cameron Smythe's project, which was to establish a Santa Susana Park Advisory Committee. Committee be responsible assisting and advising the State Department of Parks, Recreation, and to assist and facilitate the Santa Susana lab site. As we all know, back in 89, the site was found to be chemically contaminated due to the nuclear accident, hazardous waste, and everything else. But after the creation of the Santa Susana field lab in the 40s, you know, in 2007, SB 990, Boeing agreed to clean up the site, which is great, and then to transfer the property to a park, which I think is going to be wonderful for all of us. You know, that's going to be donated as a park after it's been cleaned up. So, this bill would specifically require the Department of Parks, Recreation, by February 1st of 2011, to establish the Santa Susana Park Committee to help plan the possible conversion of the site park. It also prohibits the transfer of the property to the state, prohibits the opening of a park until after the contamination is cleaned up. So, I think that's, that's very important, and according to the Department of Toxic Exclusions Control. So, anyway, that's what I'm asking. And if we have any other questions, anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. Supervisor Bennett?
I, it's a combination question-comment. It's interesting, we're making an effort to sort of look at all of our committees and all of that stuff. And I just want to be clear that our direction here would be that this is a state advisory committee, that we don't end up with, we don't have to do, that we don't end up staffing, funding, all of that kind of stuff. It'd be interesting to see if that's the case. I mean, I'm not saying I would oppose it, even if that's happened, but it's.
So, is your understanding? Yeah, my understanding, this is all state.
This is a state legislation to create a state advisory?
We don't have to be, yeah, state park advisor. We don't want to be part of that. If it was something we do, we'd want to put that clause that it ends within, you know, some of the, you know, what would you say, the sunset clause? Yes. No. I'm, you're making a motion? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And I'm going to look up and see if it's quick. If I have to vote first, that's probably a good idea. Oh, there. Okay, yes. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. And then we have our correspondence agenda.
Review and receive and file in a second.
We have a motion, review and file in a second. What's that? What do we? Okay, then we'll vote. We have 11:30 left. Supervisor Flynn? Okay. And, there we go. Unanimous, thank you. Okay. And now we have our item number 28, 11:30, time certain. Our Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation?
I just don't have that on.
Oh, yes, yes. Good point.
Hello again. Larry Matheny, Treasury Tax Collector and member of the board of the Ventura County
We have a motion to receive and file in a second.
What's that? Okay, then we'll vote. We have eleven thirty left. Supervisor Flynn? Okay. There we go. Unanimous, thank you. Okay. And now we have our item number twenty-eight, eleven thirty, time certain. Our Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation?
I just don't have that audited.
Oh, yes, yes, good point.
Hello again, Larry Matheny, Treasury Tax Collector and member of the Board of the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation. I'm very pleased to represent the foundation here today with your board in the request to renew a relationship that was started back in nineteen ninety-nine, when the Boomerang Campaign began. The Boomerang Campaign is a method by which Ventura County employees can either make one-time gifts or make an ongoing payroll deduction gift to benefit the work of the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation. And as I think all of your board members know, the aim of the Medical Resource Foundation is to improve what is already a high quality of medical care in this county by extending it to many parts of the county that really are not able to access health care in the same level to which we are all privileged to be able to enjoy it. I'm joined here today by several people who are particularly important. Our two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine campaign is going to be chaired by two very important people. One is Victoria Jump from the Area Agency on Aging, and the other is Karen Staples from the Probation Department, and I want to acknowledge them and thank them for their willingness to participate in this. The importance of the Boomerang Campaign is something that I think might best be demonstrated by pointing out that in the roughly seven-plus years that it has been in existence, it has generated over a million dollars' worth of additional funding to be used in support of health care here in our county, and that's significant. I will also point out that, as I think partial recognition of that, Paul Lorenz from the Healthcare Agency is here in support of this board letter. And also, I'd like to introduce Victoria Chandler, who is the Executive Director of the foundation, back yonder. So we're pleased to have this continuing partnership. We ask that your board renew the willingness to allow us to utilize the county's email system, Intranet, for communication purposes and whatnot. Payroll gets involved. I thank the Auditor Controller for her very important part in all of this, and participation is something that we hope to continue to expand, and I think with Victoria Jump and Karen Staples, we'll see a nice big upswing in our participation this year. I stand by to answer any questions, if you have any.
Yes, any questions?
Yes. And thank you. And I'm very supportive, obviously. I think it's great that we have this as a benefit for our county employees to continue to support our wonderful system, health care system. The opportunity drawing, I don't quite understand that piece. So if they contribute so much in a paper, they get extra points and they get what? We're given prizes?
Vicky, can you come on up and...
It's just made, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this ahead of time. I looked at it again late yesterday and said, oh, I don't understand what that means, and I missed the last board meeting, so I probably would have known.
We're going to have a drawing, and the person that wins will have a cruise to Mexico. We will also host a party for the managers and the representatives from the organizations that raised the most support for the Boomerang Campaign, from those agencies that have a thousand or more staff members, and then those agencies that have five hundred to a thousand, and then those agencies that have one to five hundred staff members, so that it's more equitable. We, this is different than Boomerang, our campaign, because this campaign really raises monies for those county programs and services that aren't funded by taxpayer dollars or would not be here if it wasn't for the Boomerang Campaign. And we've been matching money with this campaign since nineteen ninety-nine, and it's our cornerstone campaign. We're very proud of it. We have thirty-two board members that support it, and we thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
I wanted, I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this program, Larry as a treasurer and you as the Executive Director, and our two people that are coming on board here, Karen and Victoria. It's nice of you, in the midst of everything else that you're doing, to take on something, but it's one of those things that knits this county together as a family, this county organization. And so thank you for playing leadership roles, all of you, in terms of making that happen.
I want to thank all of you, because if it hadn't been for all of you, we wouldn't have the Boomerang Campaign.
Paul Lorenz for his...
I've moved the recommended action.
How come those two over there don't look so excited? They're only going to ask you to raise a million dollars this year, isn't that right? Okay, that's good. Let's set the expectations now. Thank you so much. And everybody agrees, good. Christine, could you talk about your item number ten that you wanted to bring back, that we talked about?
Staff has been in contact with our external auditors, and it's difficult to arrange their presence here on May sixth. I would request that you receive and file this item, and in particular, allow us to move forward with recommendation two, which is the public notice in the newspaper for the public to be aware of its availability. If you would like another meeting on this item, I'd have to coordinate with the management of the staff departments that have findings for a healthcare agency, human services agency to come in here to be able to answer any questions you might have.
And I think that may be a, number one, I'm fine with us doing the receive and file so that we can stay on track. What I would anticipate is that when the audit comes, that we have the auditors here for us to ask questions of them, but not necessarily have to pull in all of the department heads and everybody else unless we, unless we may say, hey, we have questions that we want to follow up with those particular departments. But it's presentation by the audit, just for us to be able to have that communication with them, I think that strikes me as the most appropriate.
Does that make sense to you? What we're saying is that if we just bring the auditor up?
Well, they were here for the CAFER. This is basically the management report they put together. So it's management and the departments that are also responding to those findings.
So you're thinking that the auditor may not be able to answer all the questions?
They structured the findings, and management report is basically management responding to those findings. So I'm not quite sure who you'd be asking the questions of.
I would think, just as a matter of practice, that if the auditor comes, the outside auditor comes and makes a presentation regarding their findings, that the departments who are ident, and they know who they are, will attend just by virtue of the fact that they're being mentioned. So I don't see that as an impediment.
Well, the most important thing is, a couple of years ago, we had the same conversation about this not being on the consent calendar, and, but I don't think we actually made it into the motion. I want, I'm trying to make it as part of this motion, that in the future, we don't have them on the consent calendar, we have some kind of presentation so that we can have that dialogue, and some kind of presentation from the auditors.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, that makes sense. So we can do that. Yes.
Well, a question, is this something that could come at the same time that the CAFER is presented?
Actually, there's two different deadlines, and they're continuing to work on this portion when the CAFER is finalized.
Okay.
Nothing can be easy, though, can it?
I'll second the motion.
Great.
Okay, so the motion is all the recommended actions with the additional direction of the CEO to make sure that this comes as a regular agenda item with the auditor served presenting. Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Not yet? We don't have one yet?
Didn't have my motion.
So a motion, then we're going to second it here? Now we do. You know, when we first put this system, everybody's going after those motion, motion, quick. Everybody's calmed down and relaxed. All right, so I think that's it for our regular agenda items. We're going to go to a closed session. Do we have an announcement that might come out of closed session?
Not on the items I know anything about.
Not from you knowing that.
Perhaps the CEO knows something I don't.
Okay, so then we'll adjourn from closed session. So then we'll adjourn from closed session.